Lisa, it's a little summer anyway.
Yeah, I see.
Yeah.
Don't worry, I signed it.
Hold on.
So you're gonna be celebrating?
But it should do.
I can't believe that.
What?
Did I never hear?
Oh, did everybody sign in myself?
Everybody signed in.
Has everybody signed in?
I've never signed in myself.
Oh, I haven't.
Oh, which area you want me to show?
Okay, everyone, welcome. Um, we are gonna start, we are going to have a little bit of a short meeting and we'll have to take an intermission at around 11:00 a.m. or for that to go across the street. The judge over there next door. Um. Ben, please call.
Mr. Malloy.
Here.
Mr. Bernard. Mr. Bernard.
Here. Okay, agenda item one is to dispense with the reading of the minutes. The workshop, May 6, 2025, and the regular meeting, May 7, 2025. Two, we approve the bills. Three, pursuant to Ohio Vice Code, you're transferring monies as submitted by the auditor dates of May 1, 25 through May 7, 2025, as listed. Four, to approve additional appropriations as submitted by the auditor, May 1 through May 7, 25. Senior levy. Five, approve appropriations as submitted Toronto County Auditor, May 1 through May 7, 2025, to the departments as listed. Six, to establish creation of HB 366 fund to be known as Fund Number 915 for use by the Trumbull County Auditor. This fund is being created pursuant to HB 366, which became effective April 9, 25. Requires each vendor license fee issued by the county auditor $25 to be remitted to the treasurer state for deposit in the treasury. This amount will be credited to the Organized Crime Commission Fund. Um, anybody? I don't know.
Right here.
Oh, yes.
All right, so prior to House Bill 366, Martha Yoder, Trumbull County Auditor, prior to the April 9 effective date of House Bill 366, um, we were collecting the statutory $25 per vendor that House Bill 366 changed that so that it's now $50 per vendor. The additional $25 goes to the, um, uh, the state's, uh, I want to get the proper title. I think it's something, but it's organized crime. It really is to fight retail theft. So it has to be returned to the state or has to be given to the state. Um, so the county share, um, is always recorded in the general fund. Um, prior to this, it's, it's a small part of the, um, 3.2 million that the auditor's office contributes to the general fund every year. Last year was about 11,000. So far this year has been about 1,500 in the first quarter. Um, so we would not want to report the state's share there because that would overinflate the county's receipts and the money does not belong to the county. Um, the auditor's office is requesting the creation of Fund 1915 as what's called a clearing fund. Um, it will hold the state's share of the money until it's set to the treasurer state. Um, some examples of clearing funds that have been done in the past. Our money's being held for other entities for a specific time. 944 is the Ingen, uh, Ingen, uh, fee. 946 is the Recorder Housing Trust and 948 is the Motel Administration Clearing. Um, so this is pretty much a routine thing, but it's necessary in order to be compliant with. Any questions?
Thank you for being here. Thanks. Uh, any questions, Commissioner? Okay, you know what? What I do want to do, Commissioners, we're gonna like this, we have representation here for the this engineering study for 911. Uh, Tacy, if you could, this is agenda item 24. We're gonna skip to, um.
Good to speak with 911 Director. Um, item number 24 to operate Trumbull County 911 to begin Phase 1 of the disvest relocation process by committing the trade and rental tax. Phillips mechanic incorporated, uh, market street warrant to work with the chosen consultant, the NCM Consulting Group. Because the facility structural engineering and street studies can formulate costs down and render into the proposed renovation project. Phase 1 will assist Commissioners in determining the proper funding needed for the Trumbull County disvest relocation and supply renderings to be used to secure that funding. Uh, project cost would be $18,300 to Phillips mechanic and $45,561 to NCM Consulting Group. Um, in addition, uh, there's an add addition to this reason. There will be an additional $30,000 that would need to go for the structural engineering for testing. And I brought Bruce mechanic with me. He's gonna kind of just do a brief overview of what this will do. Um, and this is kind of in response to Commissioner Bernard, your kind of idea of let's kind of break it down in phases so you guys can know, you'll know like what's gonna look like, what we're gonna need and give us an idea for cost. That way, when you're going to try to secure funding through grant writing or, you know, from the state or however we do that, you'll have an idea of what number we actually would need to make this happen.
Great.
Commissioner, Bruce mechanic, both mechanic architects. Uh, we've worked on crazy with the piece of building study and the question was where do we go with cost? Well, obviously the health department building in Portland makes the most sense in terms of size and cost of improvement. Whenever you take a building and use it for what is called a risk category four, which is our station, hospital, uh, call center for 911, that, that building has to be structurally, um, modified to make it compliant with state code. And so when you build new, it's easy. When you do it with modification, you have to go through that analysis process. That's what we're talking about now. Based on what we've done in the past and working in the past with City of Portland, actually, and building, we have a lot of the information for modeling and we can complete that rather quickly. And then there's a small cost in there. I think like $20,000, $100,000 is pretty simple. Most of the other costs that we have in there for 14,000 plus on there is for our structural engineer to go in, determine what testing needs to be done on the building or inclusion of the area. When you have a structure like this, um, and we're converting it for risk category four, every part of the building has to be tested in some way and looked at. So they determine the criteria and then that's where the 30,000, as Tacy just said, we have testing agency coming. That is the rough number. It is probably high. But then once that testing's done, that information begin to our engineer again, they'll review it and say exactly what items need to be modified in the building. So we'll get very exact cost on that ahead of time. So that gives us a very complete package going out there. We could just do a rendering now, but we wouldn't have any more additional information on cost. And so we would kind of be waiting until after the fact, you know, when we're finally even opposed to having it ahead of time. So I, I, you know, this is probably, this saves probably a third of the cost that we would have to spend if we did a complete project at one time. So really minimizes it to get you the information you need.
So like we had mentioned, you're doing this in stages and finding out the, um, soundness of the, the area. And what, what do you look for in general when, when you're doing that?
Well, it's, it, the, the, the real effort is the load path and how the different connections are made on there. So do we need to strengthen any of the connection? And we have three different building types that have been used on there. Some is wood framing, some is steel construction, some masonry. So each of those different areas have to be tested. So when we have a steel frame like up at the second floor there where 911 is, we have to make sure that there's either proper moment connections or braising place to allow it to meet the risk category requirement. Technically, you could actually build a wood building to meet those requirements, but you do that from the start. It's easy. When you go back and retrofit, it's not so.
So, Bill, being we're doing this in phases, like 18,045, then another 30. Is there any risk of not putting out the bid, being over the 70 by breaking it up and avoiding it that way?
Well, a couple of things. First of all, I'll, uh, built into prosecutor's office, I'll just kind of reiterate that I really don't like giving legal advice in the middle of a public meeting, uh, for, uh, for what it's worth. But second of all, no, I don't, I don't believe there is an issue. Uh, we, we've discussed this with, uh, Tacy and we've, you know, I don't believe there's any issue with the way this is being done.
And I will comment on that, Commissioner. 30,000 would be a separate outside company that would have to be hired through the Commissioners here separate. And the NCM and Phillips mechanic are two different contracts. So it's not breaking it up. NCM is providing all the, um, technical, uh, support. Right, while we're just strictly focusing on the building.
Is NCM gonna have any more money than that 45,000 consulting?
They are, their total for the entire project is over the 75,000 threshold. They're exempt from, um, going out the bid due to it being 911 and being consultants. We've already, we already went through that. Um, so the breaking it up won't matter because they're exempt from going out the bid.
Gotcha.
And then, um, his portion is in addition to the existing one that we've already went out the bid where they were chosen originally. So it's just an add-on to that project.
You had mentioned this is a high number that you, you're talking about.
The 30,000 was a high number, right? And that, and that is dependent upon what the structural engineer comes up with each of the joints. So when they look at the connections and load path and if they find it's all compliant, they may only say, well, we only need tests in 10 places and it might be 12,000. You know, we just don't know at this point until they actually get into the building and do these.
Split connections and load, load path. What exactly is connections and?
The connection was how the steel or how the, is, is connected, how the steel or the wood and the masonry is actually anchored into the foundation. The, the whole idea is when this is, um, exposed to either earthquake loads or wind loads, this has to resist that. It's a risk category four. And it's, it's just a complete analysis.
Tacy, are we gonna have, is this gonna incorporate like talking about earthquakes and tornadoes and things? Will this be, will we be housed there? Do we have a down, are we gonna be down in the basement?
There's, there's gonna be an additional storm shelter that has to be installed either onsite or right next door. Um, that's part, that will come back in the study as well as where would be best to do that and how much that cost would be. And additionally, like he said, as the structural engineers come in and say, these 10 sites need testing, at that point we'll reach out or he'll reach out to the agencies that do that and then we'll get quotes, which will fall under the $75,000 threshold as well. We'll just do three quotes and then we'll go with the lowest and best for that as well.
But, but this study will incorporate this tornado proof, hurricane proof, uh, area.
We'll strengthen all of the connections for the building in general, but we'll provide a storm shelter.
And then we'll also talk with the health department because they were looking at replacing the roof eventually anyway. So if we can coordinate our, our plan with them, then when they replace the roof, if anything needs, you know, uh, reinforce at that time, it could be part of them, of that roofing project with little stainless steel on it. This way you'll actually have a decent number of what we're looking at. We would need to actually make the move if we're able to make them as opposed to kind of shooting in the dark and saying we think it might be less than this or less than that.
Commissioner, you have a question?
I mean, we all know that 911 needs to be moved, okay? Here's my concern. If you look at 18,000, 45,000 and 30,000, that's $93,000 that we're gonna have to come up. To do a study, tell us that we're probably gonna need a million or half to $2 million. We spent $100,000 that we don't have and then we get that study saying that we need another $2 million to move them we don't have. You know, it's just like the dog pound. Design you have in your office. They spent $200,000 and we don't have $2 million to build the facility. So I think we really need to think about before we spend another 100,000, where we're gonna come up with $2 million to move them. And they need move, I, I, I understand it. But do we spend 100,000 for another bookcase architect draw?
As they said, Commissioner, we don't even know what to ask for with the state reps, with the consulting group, with anyone else until we have a figure. And as Nick said, they want to rein money. They want to give money on things that are already ready to go. Um, this is gonna prepare us for that.
Where do we get the 100,000?
Well, we've got, uh.
Where do we get the 100,000?
We've got some, we're gonna see fun stuff. We were pulling money and we gotta start spending the money. We, we need it anyway. We know the price tomorrow, Bill, this is gonna be more expensive than it is today. And we know if we wait a year, two years, three years, it's gonna be double, triple what it is just looking at what happens in government, what happens with the building. This is something we're gonna have to do. Whether we borrow the money, whether we do a bond issue, whatever we need to do with this, we know it needs done. So let's start making the steps to do it. You know, there's no use sitting on our hands anymore.
It's been needed done. I agree with you. But we had the ARP money and done what we.
Well, we didn't know the hospital was gonna be closing at that time and there wasn't the urgency as much as, as there was after that happened last.
Somebody tell me where we get the 100,000.
Well, you know, and I, and, and I understand your concerns, Commissioner. We can't keep kicking the can down the road. We do have to, we talked about this before. So what we need to do, if we're not gonna, if we're not gonna incorporate some sort of a sales tax, which has been kicked around forever, which you know I am 100% for, quarter percent. And I think the Commissioners would have to make that decision. However, if we're not gonna do that, then I would agree that we're gonna have to do some sort of bond issues. We're gonna have to take loans. And then down, down later on down the road, when we do get the sales tax or incorporate, you know, this quarter percent, which we have been, this shit should have been done years ago.
And, and this is something, Commissioner, too. This building ran five floors. The county didn't have the money to buy it when they did it. They borrowed money and paid it off. The jail next door that houses 300 prisoners, they didn't have the bank account to just go write a check for it. They, they did what they had to do to borrow money and then pay it back over time. Every county building you have out there, that's just business. That's government. That's, you know, we, we run the county just like any business would run things. You invest in your future. This is investing in our future. It's investing in, in better services for our residents. And there's a cost to that. That's why they pay taxes. That's why we have property taxes and people go and they pay every year. Uh, and that's why we have the sales taxes out there so they can get good services. All we're doing here is providing the best service for the residents with their own money.
You know, I feel confident though, Commissioner, that, uh, this facility, and I've toured, I told you I've toured that personally. Um, I believe, and I think, Tacy, you believe that this is probably the best facility or situation that we have for 911. I think it could be retooled. It could be done at a, at a cost that is probably a whole heck of a lot less than if we were to build, you know, a facility. But again, we, you know, like Commissioner Malloy had mentioned, we can't, we're gonna have to quit kicking that can. So we're, we, we need to do what we need to do, whether it's a loan, whether it's a bond or, or a sales tax to bring more monies into Trumbull County. And we're the lowest out of three commu, uh, counties in, in the state of Ohio, uh, sales tax at six and three quarter. At some point, you get inflation, you have, and like Commissioner said, these prices are gonna continue to escalate. If we don't do it now, Commissioner, we're gonna be looking three, four years down the road at maybe triple the cost. So that, that's just my, you know, I'm one Commissioner. We're all three here to discuss it. But, um, I feel confident that this facility is gonna be able to be utilized for 911 and we could get them out of the hospital, which we don't even know what's going on over there at this, this point in time, so, um.
And, and this is something I agree. This could have, should have, what is a million, Bill? If we were to use the ARPA money for this, what do we do? Not buy nine ambulances for the townships? Do we not want to do Meadow Brook Drive?
In some incidents, yeah.
Well, that's, we, we could debate every single one of those. We could play backseat quarterback or backseat driver on all. In hindsight, it's 2020. We did the best we could with the money that came in with the request that came in at the time, the grants. Every township, every missed county, every entity got a piece of it for what they needed post-COVID and all the stuff. And I don't think there's anything that was wasted in there where it shouldn't went to this first or shouldn't went to that first. We had many meetings prioritizing the needs of the ARPA money, public meetings.
We're gonna have ARPA money left over. And even the, uh, Senator had mentioned, we're looking at getting some of those monies redelegated at, at a federal levels. So we're gonna have to work towards getting those ARPA monies that are gonna be left over. Some of these could be utilized. Hopefully this will, hopefully that'll happen. It'll help us on a federal level. Uh, those monies that are left over, that's, i- it's just would be ridiculous to give it back. I mean, they gave it to us. We came in lower than what we thought. Now we have monies left over. Hopefully if we could utilize some of those monies, uh, it's not 100%, but you know, maybe, maybe we could get that done. I understand your point, Commissioner. I know you don't want to spend the money, but.
No, it's not about spending. I, I want to make sure that we have the money. And I guess I'm looking at a different class than you guys are, right? Because I think we're in financial problems here, okay? I think we're gonna be facing layoffs. We have to worry about paying some of our utility costs.
This is why we need to make the decision to, to put the sales tax. We need a quarter percent now, not later, not down the road. We really do.
I want to know where the money is coming from before we spend it. That's all I'm saying. Where we're gonna come up with 100,000 to do the study, first of all? And then where we're gonna come up with 2.5 million to fund it? Because we all know what it's gonna cost.
Right, the 100 now, but two and a half or whatever that is later.
And we also have, we have, we have a situation with the coroner's office and we have a situation with the telephone.
We gotta do the dog pound end of the, right, yes.
Along with the everyday operations, okay?
Right.
We have some, we have some funding problems here.
We do.
Whether you guys want to admit it or not, we do. I'm just saying, where do we come up with 100,000 right now? And then where do we come up with the money? I don't want to, I don't want to do 100,000 and put another study on a bookshelf.
Right. Well, we do say, we do have some monies left.
And I'm, I'm gonna tell you another thing. I'm never gonna vote for a tax unless it goes to the people, not the people.
I know you're not, but I, I.
I'm perfectly clear on that.
I'm, you know, I'm, I'm against that, but that's my opinion.
Well.
You know, I think that Commissioners have the avail, availability to be able to do it. I think we could put a quarter percent. We, we, uh, delegate, we bring $8 million into our general and.
You, you can do it, but just not with my vote.
Okay, well, I'm not playing politics. I know you aren't and it's probably not a, it's probably not a very good thing to, you know, I, I mean, I'm probably gonna take a hit, but you know what? It's about the county and it's about bringing money in that is well needed.
Let them decide.
I don't know. I don't know. We'll talk to the prosecutor how that works, not right now. But we're gonna need to move on because we, uh, we have to, uh, meet with the judge. Um, we're gonna move on to agenda item number seven. And that is to adopt the resolution to reclaiming the month of May, 2025 is Mental Health Awareness Month. Um, and we just had a very nice proclamation next door at the planning commission, the mental health board, who does a great job, uh, over there with the, uh, inmates, uh, at the sheriff's department. Sheriff, you know, about all that. Well, the, uh, mental health, uh, you know, how they handle that over the, the inmates over there. You know, with them being incarcerated. And then we'll have a presentation of that resolution. Um. Item number eight, approved fiscal years 2026, 27 for the grant application for TCAP and the amount of $1,227,333. Uh, that's paid in eight installments of $153,000 or 1663. Do you want to give us a little?
Yes, please. Tracey, Tracey Hunt, uh, adult probation. Um, this is one of three grants that the probation department receives. It's a continual renewal. It only requires your signatures and the judge has agreement that they will divert F5s from prisons. Um, our three grants altogether make probation department relatively self-sufficient. The only thing we ask from the general fund is workers' comp, uh, retirement, and we pay for everything else in our department, including this grant, so please sign it. Thank you.
Appreciate you being here. Okay, agenda item nine. Uh, John Hickey wasn't able to be here. I'll read this to the Men Commissions regular meeting dated April 9, 25. Item number 20, that read to enter into a contract in the amount of $617,045 with LDB custom specialty vehicles uh, through GSA U.S. General Services Administration purchasing contract. Uh, this is for the TCMA Mobile Command Post Vehicle. Um, it is determined that it would be cost effective to have a unit delivered instead of going to pick it up. Um, and it, they provide, uh, eight-hour in-service training in Trumbull County with that delivery. So multiple, um, first responders, Trumbull County IT and vehicle maintenance and communication installers can all attend in the training. And, uh, this, this is all coming from the ARPA funds, the purchase of that vehicle. So it didn't cost us anything out of our general fund. And that is one heck of a vehicle, a command vehicle. Um, I'm gonna turn it over to Gary.
Yeah, Commissioner, thank you. And number, item number 10 is to authorize the clerk to advertise the BID to help craft road project on farming township. It is an ARPA funded project that was awarded by the Commissioners. So we're gonna administer that as a county project. So we'll be in BID to get that completed this summer. 11 is a similar item. That's Mesopotamia's ARPA project. Um, and that is, uh, I think, believe there are five roads. We're gonna do different types of improvements to five different roads there in Mesopotamia township, so that's good. Number 12 is to improve the second extension of the traffic signal maintenance contract of main lights electric. Uh, that was originally awarded back in '23 and then provided for extensions, new extensions. It's gonna extend, uh, that maintenance contract on five, 26 seasons. 14 is to approve, uh, the application for closure of, um, North Levitt, or South Levitt Road, I'm sorry. It's for that film production. It's gonna be coming up on June 1st. Uh, they submitted all their required paperwork. Um, I can share it with Bill Dance and coordinating with him also. Maybe coordinating with our sheriff also for that. So continue to have those conversations at the. That is to, that, uh, releasing an application for closure. 14 is to compare with our office and grant the special permit listed. 15 is, uh, with our office and grant the special on the fire fleet permit listed. 16 is to compare with our office and grant the right-of-way permits.
Okay. Thank you, Gary. Real quick, um, the right-of-way permit, is that off at about 7? Commissioner, what do we do with that? Is that the, the tower or through the injection well or what is that? So I think the Commissioners will have to approve that. This, this is something else. Around 7, is that?
This is the one, yeah, this is McMall. We have water. Before that, the other board denied.
Oh, no, they, we never, never voted on this. They denied access into our gate. This is extending the road beyond the gates. They can make a right turn into another property.
This is, you know, before you get to the gate, This is, you know, before you get to the gate, they wanna put in a road called Ron Ronner Property Ranch. Okay, that's all they're gonna do. At this time, they said they didn't have any plans for any roads or drives coming off. They just wanted to get.
It isn't something we have to vote on. Uh, that's the gate situation. Okay, you know what? I apologize, we are gonna have to pause the meeting quickly.
Commissioner, I'll make a motion, we go on a recess for thirty minutes, come back at eleven thirty. So we go on and Ken David Medal of Honor recipient next door to probate court.
Yeah.
And then plan on coming back at eleven thirty, half hour from now.
Okay. Second.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Senator.
Yes.
Senator.
Yes.
I apologize to everyone that's here. This is Trumbull County's first Medal of Honor recipients in civil war. So we have to acknowledge and show them and get back quickly. And you're welcome to join us and attend with us. It's open to the public.
Okay, seventeen.
Let's wait for that. Okay. I'm thinking it's your turn. So it probably will be actually a waiting. It's time to get to it. Okay. Wait. It's like that, that's good. Hmm. Two sliders. Sliders. I'll wear some sliders.
Hmm. I'm sorry. Quit talking about me. No, I don't.
You want sliders.
Find yourself a great. Yeah.
Some others.
We've been. Either have a motion to make the meeting adjourned.
Hi, Mr. General, I can make a motion and reconvene our work session.
Second motion?
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Sir Hernandez?
Yes.
Okay, on the agenda item seventeen. Execute a letter of support for the City of Gerard's application at the Appalachia Regional Commission Fund for fiscal year 2026. Project allows for sewer overflow and station improvements. And to authorize Rick Hernandez, President of the Board of Trumbull County Commissioners, execute the letter. Is this Gary?
No, this is Nina.
Oh, okay.
Hi, Commissioners, Gita Magazine, K O Consulting. Um, yeah, so you guys have any questions? Um, this is from the City of Gerard's grant application to ARC. Um, that's just their regular one. Um, this grant, if you've got, the county's putting in an application, this will not affect Dorans. Um, it's a fire that they need to get other support from the company bodies, so. Yeah.
Thank you, Janice. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Any questions, Commissioners, no?
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, eighteen, designate week of May eleventh, twenty twenty five through May seventeen twenty five as the Economic Development Week in Trumbull County. In accordance with the International Economic Development Council. Yes, nineteen, we're going to move on to the maintenance commission.
Good, and so eighteen, the county's Trumbull County Commission. This week is Economic Development Week, uh, with the I E B C International Economic Development Council. That is a worldwide organization, so in Dublin and, uh, France and Italy, they're also celebrating this. We've invited partners from the Fort Norie Valley Partners, uh, and several other agencies all be here tomorrow. Uh, in words called the developing week. Um, nineteen, uh, this is to receive a maintenance bond for lot being in Clines Farm. The work has already been done, uh, is standard when you see the maintenance bond for two years in case anything needs to be done to correct the work. But two years will be expired. Uh, number twenty, this is the community development block grants allocation, uh, agenda item. A couple of these numbers have been corrected, I've already worked with and worked to get those corrected. Um, but this is to authorize the, um, the items you selected last week. The pick scenario five, which is the City of Gerard block facilities for the, uh, uh, fire hydrant replacement, um, road improvements on Donnelly Road in Muscatania Township. Uh, sewer facilities in Roseville Township and Plainies and Rixley Towns, township. Um, there's a note will be adding ten thousand dollars of all the loan fund to match the water improvements. Um, that also includes item two, which is the neighborhood revitalization grant, City of Gerard's fine work. Go our office, again, they are not eligible to go on their own, uh, so they have to go through the county. Um, number three is a critical infrastructure grant for federal street storm drainage improvements in Liberty Township. There's also a grant, again, Liberty is not eligible to apply on their own, so they are applying through the county. Um, it's to authorize us to do a public notice, uh, for the, in, for the second public hearing. For Liberty Township and authorize presidents, uh, I'm sorry, that's in Liberty Township, but it's for all of these programs. And to authorize, uh, President of the Board to start and execute all the related documents to the pre-application application. Receipt, execution, and implementation of funds through the, for the allocation, for the construction brand in neighborhood revitalization. Receipt, execution, and implementation of funds through the, for the allocation, for the construction grant, and neighborhood revitalization. Um, item number twenty one is not mine. Sorry.
Thank you for doing my job. Sure.
Uh, Gary, new Brown Sanctuary Engineer, Commissioner's item twenty one, this is the A R C Appalachia Regional Commission, uh, free applications are. Following my desk. And I am going to, Commissioner Hernandez, sign off on that free application. And you can see on the next page, these are the proposed funding sources that will be listed in the application. Uh, we're looking at seven hundred and fifty thousand O P W C, hoping to get half a million here from A R C. Uh, we already invested three hundred and fifty thousand of A R P into the engineering. Uh, Emily and Julie have already submitted the, uh, five hundred and twenty thousand for the C D B G R big grant. And that previous resolution there had the seventy thousand formula. That still leaves us a, a zero percent loan of one, two, forty-five, two fifty. And this is where we have to be hopeful that, uh, our request for congressional appropriation comes through. Uh, if not, we may have to reduce the scope of the project, that sort of thing.
Thank you, Gary. Commissioners, any questions for Gary? Uh, Daryl, we'll move on to maintenance.
I take it, um, twenty-two, uh, partner John Facility Maintenance. Uh, last week, you guys tabled twenty-two on the, the down deposit, I think it was, were ran. Uh, I reached out to G D K Doors, uh, they was okay with waiving it and adding it to the original quote, which would have been seven thousand. Um, and he was all good with it, so.
Great, well, we saved three thousand dollars that way on the same door.
Yeah.
Good job. Thank you. You did.
Yeah, no problem.
Commissioners, I am gonna add the removal table. With the side up.
You mean the, uh, four down or four thousand?
Yeah, the one on the table, and then this next.
Okay.
Then the side of it. That's.
Okay, but my only question is, Mr. Danzo, where are you going this? Right? Are you going to where are I? Uh, yeah, I, I believe so.
Um. Okay. So we're moving on to twenty-three. I think we changed the agenda from yesterday. I thought, uh, maintenance had two.
Right, and twenty-three is Daryl Donegan, uh, facilities.
Yeah, that is Daryl.
Yeah.
Yes. Yeah, Daryl.
To authorize a repair of the Trumbull County Jail, uh, chiller control board by Gardner, uh, in the amount of eighteen thousand eight hundred and ninety-two dollars. Um. So the chiller is out currently. There's two chillers at the jail. One is currently out. Um, we're okay until we get up into eighty degrees or, or higher, uh, and that could be an issue. Um, this is a proprietary piece of equipment, um, meaning there isn't really anybody else that can do this work, unfortunately. Um, we looked around and either direction we go, Gardner has to come in and program it. What's this fund? Which fund is that?
That's their fund.
Thank you. Thank you, Daryl.
Still general, but still. Why, how, what, that? Do you know what the money's there? Did Kay check it?
She checked.
Okay, then you're okay.
Okay, we covered twenty-four with Tacy. Uh, we'll move on to twenty-five to adopt a resolution for claiming the week of May eleventh through the seventeenth of May, two thousand and twenty-five as Police Week. Uh, and May fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-five as Peace Officers Memorial Day in Trumbull County, Ohio. This is, uh, with proclamation that's issued also by Mike Dewine, the Governor of the State of Ohio. And with then we will have a presentation of the resolution. Twenty-six, adopt the resolution congratulating D J Godfrey as winner of Trumbull County Birthday T-shirt Design Contest. We will present a resolution for D J Godfrey. Congratulations. Twenty-seven, we will enter an executive session. Bureau of Vice Code one twenty-one, two-two, G three, with the attorney, uh, concerning disputes involving public body. Uh, subject of pending or imminent court action. And then twenty-eight, we will return and reconvene from executive session. Uh, from the O R C one-two, one-two-two, G three. And that concludes. Yes, ma'am.
I am going to add on, um, two reappointments for the mental health and recovery.
Okay.
If you were sent that information in mid-March, I'll resend it to you again, so you can review the application, but these are reappointments.
Okay. Okay.
There are, there are other board seats open now that we have not had a chance to review those applicants for the reappointments. We have all their information on file, and they are officers. So to be able to continue on with business now their meetings, uh, we need to consider their report first.
Okay, so we have, uh, Sheriff's Department. We have Diane here. Um. We have, um. You know, Jason, um. Let's see, who, who should we go with first? Jason, you wanna?
Uh, true.
Give us, yeah, why don't you say, give us the name, please, and.
Jason Altavelli, uh, I'm going to stay. Um, I'm coming here today to bring to your attention, uh, some things that have, uh, popped up, um, regarding taxation of property. Been working hard over the last, you know, five to ten years trying to do some residential development, uh, in Trumbull County. And, uh, congratulations to you on your economic development announcement. That's big, and what we need now is housing. Um. We had a variety of projects underway, and, uh, just were hit with a, what appears to be a new taxing policy by the Trumbull County Auditor's Office. To date, you are taxed, uh, on parcels when they're created and planted, and then established a new parcel ID number, a tax bill, and so forth. Uh, unbeknownst to us, with tax bill this year on a project that's been underway for twelve years to a tripling of the tax bill. Couldn't figure out why, so called and said, we're now gonna tax you, uh, based on your proposed parcels. So basically, you have the ability to create seven, we will therefore tax you based on seven parcels that are unyet created and tax you at the full market rate. Um, it, not only is it selectively being enforced against us and targeted based on other similar properties in the county that are of same, of the same nature. And not being done that way, uh, it is prohibitive to future development. The cost that you would incur to do that, to hold those uncreated parcels, will render the projects not feasible. So again, I'm here to defend our situation, bring it to your attention, but also when you look at other developers that are out there trying to do these things to bring houses online. They're not being treated the same way, and when they do get, uh, tagged the same way, you're gonna have a, a pretty big outcry. For, uh, the change, the abrupt change in this policy. Now. I've reached out to every county auditor in the Lake River Region, their offices. Uh, not one agreed with the policy, nor has instituted that same tax policy. I've reached out to the state reps, uh, previously an auditor himself, doesn't agree with the policy. Uh, there, there's no standing for the way they're doing it now. Again, O R C provides whatever, uh, options they're there. But I can't get an answer from that office that establishes a policy. When I asked, what is the policy? I was told, we adjust values whenever and wherever where it's brought to our attention. Now, as a business owner, you can't conduct business with uncertainty. If there is not some level of certainty on how we're taxing proposed parcels that are yet to be created, I can assure you when the word gets out. That's going to be a huge detriment to the progress in housing in this community. And I mean, this is the county. And I'm only here to bring it to your attention. Uh, I, I, I've reached out professionally, asked for meetings, a dialogue, an understanding, trying to do some homework, to see what we can do to work together, and I've been road blocked at every, every step of the way. So, uh, I'm looking for a solution, not for us only, but for whoever's out there trying to do it, and I have ten to fourteen examples of other properties. My goal is not to bring that in. I'm here on behalf of ourselves, but there's no equal and consistent policy in place. And I, I'm afraid that's a problem for this, this community and all the power.
Yeah, and Mr. Altavelli, we've talked about this, and the commissioners have discussed this. And on behalf of the commissioners, I could say that we, we, we do not agree with it either. So we're gonna have to look at the solution. Um, it would be nice to have the auditor here. She was here for a little bit, but unfortunately she stepped out. Uh, maybe she'll come back. Uh, we are, um, and we've had an invite, uh, to talk to some legislators, uh, uh, high-power level. Uh, we had Senator Marino here, uh, just last week. He mentioned the red tape. Uh, we, we can't, we can't, uh, tie the, you know, tie a knot to our developers here with, we have, you know, corporations like Kimberly Park and others that are gonna be coming. It's gonna require major housing, but to personally make to tax a non-approved parcel the way that you're being taxed and others.
Not created.
Not created. Is not the way they do it in other, in other, um, uh, more communities or.
The main, the main stage is, throughout the state, there could be a variety of economic positives and negatives, maybe they do it here, but in our area, we, we struggled to get to this point. And now we've put so much time and, uh, investment and risk into this to, now the rules just changed. I, we, we can't, that, that's, again, it's, it's becomes cost prohibitive, and the risk becomes too much. The, the amount of time, and I wish Nick was here, the amount of time and effort, meetings, and people that touch these things, i- it's tremendous. You don't just build a road and sell houses. I mean, the, the, the capital improvements, the working together with all the different entities, it takes years. And you finally get it to where we're starting to pick up some steam, and then you get blindsided by a new policy that's erroneous. And, and I can't even get a straight answer. Like, I can't even have a conversation. When did this policy take effect? Unbeknownst to me, uh, March. It, it just happened.
Just for the year of twenty-four.
In twenty twenty-four?
Yeah.
But it, it showed up on March, and, and again, so I was.
So you, you got no notification. It just showed up on your text?
Correct, and I brought the, to show you the matter, but the, the point is, you know, I was then presented with, well, what changed? I asked, what changed? This is the beauty. Now, this project, this specific project has been going on for ten years. Well, we drove in there, and we realized the trees were cut down, and because you had an advertisement online advertising lots per cent. So I can't advertise a lot that's proposed, this like, and you're gonna pull that as taxable value? What if a lot never gets created nor, I didn't? It just seems like we're just ahead of ourselves on this. It, it doesn't make a lot of sense. And, and again, this one project isn't the, but we got some other things coming up that will be shut down.
Well, we should help developers. This, this is. That's exactly what we should do. We as commissioners, so I don't know what we can do. Do we have anything legally, Mr. Danzo, that we could do?
Uh, Bill Danzo Prosecutor's Office, uh, the appraisals and things like that are conducted by the auditor's office, so directly, I don't, I don't think the commissioners have any role in the appraisal of the property or how those appraisals are billed.
So if she wants to stop development, she has to stop.
What I, what I would say, though, is I'm not sure, honestly, I'm not sure whether you guys have filed anything with a board of revision or anything like that, but if so, I just would caution the Board of Commissioners, you do have a seat on that board of revision, so I think that, you know, then you'd wanna be a little bit careful about prejudging anything if that's the case. But, you know, you, you do have a voice through the board of revision as one vote on there, yeah, I believe, if that were to go forward.
It, to your point, Bill, yes, we've been, I'm sorry, Commissioner, I just kind of, so I've been down the path of order revision. And, boy, that's a slippery slope, because you're going into a room with your people that have appraised it. They kick it out, send it off to the B T A, and that's what they want us to do. They want me to prove that they're right or wrong. That's not my job. My job is not to question the tax value. Nothing's changed other than a new policy. If they wanna go down the path of B O R, that's their policy. I'm looking for the court of public opinion to put weight on this situation, and every other developer, the peninsula, Kimberly, everything that's underway in this county. To put pressure on this situation, say, we don't want this. We want it the way it was so we can grow and prosper. I'm not going down the path of B O R, 'cause that's what they want, and I'm not here to make their job easy for them.
Commissioner, we, we've, we've signed on more than a million dollars of our taxpayer money on the Valley Vision two thousand and fifty. We've had meetings, and every meeting, the topic of the meeting right now was housing. And how do we cut through the red tape? How do we make it easier for developers to develop here? We're already at a financial disadvantage in this region of the country, where the developers pay the same cost per material, but they're, they can sell houses in the Mahoning Valley a lot cheaper than they can in other parts of the, the country. So to even have someone interested to develop in our county is a big deal. To provide cheap housing is a big deal for this area. We need all players on board. Right now. East Gate, Port Authority, Chamber Commerce, City Warren, the Commissioners' Office, all these people that are part of Valley Vision, all these people that are moving forward with how do we make housing easier are working together, with the exception of our Auditor's Office. Our Auditor's Office seems to be the Lone Ranger in this, and hasn't attended the meetings. What we did ask yesterday, we had a meeting yesterday again, myself and a commissioner from Mahoning County and the Chamber Commerce. They're gonna reach out to the state auditor, who's gonna be here in a, a couple of weeks, and ask him to please review the policy, review the O R C. Come up with some examples in other areas of why he allows the interpretation to be different in other areas. And to possibly meet with our auditor to try to stress from the state level the urgency that we need to help out our developers to provide housing for our residents. So if it's a matter of interpretation, we're asking that the state auditor get involved with this thing, and, and it comes to, if there is a hangup there O R C wise. Then we need our state legislators to intervene and change whatever needs changed, but none of that can happen without communication and communication. You know, we're all on the same team moving forward. Right now, we've got an anchor with this thing. When it comes to development, we need to remove that anchor. Well, there, if there's a problem with interpretation of the Bureau of Vice Code, that's what we have a prosecutor's office for, and it's my understanding that the Auditor's Office has never approached a prosecutor's office for opinion on, she's just stopping it herself, correct? And there were some communications that I, I was privy to, that were shown to me that. Have you had any?
Uh, Commissioner, I can't disclose my communication with clients, and the auditor is another client of our office. Um, I, I, what I would always say is the clients have the ability to waive privilege if they wanna release anything. They're willing to do that, you guys included. Uh, but I can't comment on that myself.
Uh, I'm not looking to be adversarial. I'm just looking for it to be the way it was when you started. And I could, if I lined up every developer and seller, that, they'd be asking the same thing. We don't want those, we don't want special treatment. Just put it back to the way it was so we can move forward, progress. Why are we putting restrictive taxes on things that aren't even created yet? Just because you think you can or you interpret it that way, doesn't mean you should. Leadership is, is, is about making decisions that are more, that are more worldly than just what yours, what you think you create. You understand, like, you understand?
I don't understand commissioners' or understanding. We've been told that they do it differently in, in other counties. So why are we putting a noose on our developers in taxation the way that we are when other? Others aren't.
We should be, never did.
And prior to, never did. So, Mr. Altavelli, the commissioners are definitely gonna be on this. The auditor position is, it's an elected position.
On that position and dialogue.
But we will, we will make sure that whatever we can do to stimulate housing and with all that we got coming in, it's just gonna get intense, and we're gonna need housing. We're gonna need more develop, so we can't noose developers. We know that. That's our next, that's our next step.
Here, it's been, what, since two thousand and seven, since we've had that housing development?
Yeah.
In Trumbull County.
Collins Farm was built in nineteen ninety-nine.
I mean, let's get it going on here, I mean.
And again, everything we have going on isn't just starting today. This has been in, in process. It's like I started under a certain way. What, what changed besides someone read something a certain way? You understand? And, and again, if there's a, if there's a solution, then we can engage another economic development agency to work with, to maybe team up with, that maybe helps to fray taxes or, or ways that we can collaborate. to maybe team up with it, maybe helps defray taxes or or ways that we can collaborate with different entities that are out there to help keep these things going. So they're not burdened by unnecessary property taxes on things that aren't created yet. Then I I would, I would implore you to in in, let's have those conversations. Again, not for us, but for anybody who is in the process of developing things that might be, are gonna be taxed ahead of when they're created. It's a lot. That's not a good look.
And the more it costs you to build, the more you have to pay on this.
That's not our goal, right? The goal is affordable. We gotta keep it down. Everything just keeps going up.
That could, that could be all of their profit, Commissioner. They gotta pay taxes on something for ten years till it's built or five years. When they make the profit of the house, will they wanna sell it? It's not, it's not.
Not even profit. Think about, think about if a plot has thirty lots proposed, right? And you're gonna send me a tax bill at eighteen thousand dollars, twenty thousand dollars, every year that goes by, you lose a lot. And I'll, I'll give you an example in in Weathersfield, Oakwood Estates. They plotted a hundred and twenty lots in in late eighties. We still have fifteen of those lots for sale today for them. It's forty years. You you understand the ri- the the burden is just tremendous. And we're going through a, there's growth. Imagine if you get an O eight where things stagnate for ten years and I'm on, it's over. Oh, call though. The developer went bad. He lost every property up there because he couldn't afford the taxes. This is so common sense. It's, I don't understand. I don't know why it's this way. That's my two cents.
Thank you, Mr. Eltavelli.
Can I ask, Attorney, uh, Jerry Eltavelli? Attorney Danzo. The question I have is if you have one developer developer being taxed this way, what about all the other ones? All the other roads that have a road in? Just go down Belmont Avenue. You got utilities, road, and then you can go to the trailer and say, well, that's a proposed lot. You're gonna be taxed accordingly, even though it's an acre. So they need to go down. And I talked to the appraisers. That's what's driving it. I talked to the appraisers. And I told them, I said, then you need to go down everywhere, every development and repass everybody. Then you're gonna have a war. You're gonna have tons of people coming in. They just lost common sense. So that's something you should research, research as as the attorney for the county. Is there a liability that you're you're selectively enforcing somebody over all the other people? Somebody needs to have this conversation. They won't talk. It's nonsense. Can you look into that?
I I can't really let you know.
Well, let the commissioners know. I think there's a liability there.
Something we could talk about.
Yeah. Is there, is there a liability there that you're selectively enforcing one and you're not doing every other street in the whole county? And I, and he said, well, we enforce it when we're notified. I just notified you. Are you doing it? This was up two months ago. They don't even give you the time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Diane, do you have something?
We have, uh, Mr. Mr.
More Times has another engagement. We bring them up.
Edward Anthony here representing uh the Trumbull County VMA. I've got a couple of the other members here with also on there. Um, a couple of issues. Not even here for this, but just listening to this because we've been back and forth representing more times have been with Kimberly Clark. That's something you guys really gotta look into because there's, you have another need today is the meaning of one thirty. That is one of the issues that has been brought up on further development of housing. Um, they're big on that. So any future uh tax rates or anything like that should really be communicated with them. I'll tell you what, that's, that's big. I mean, I don't, I know you've heard this, but it's not only the existing plant they're putting in here. But I spent almost three hours with them over the last couple of weeks and they're talking about future things. And and it's all, it's all probably gonna come to fruition. I mean, if they're comfortable with our situation here. I mean, like I said, we have Zoom, except for one thirty. So I think about what the gentleman's bringing up because that it's it's our population in Trumbull County, for the most part, is declining considerably. Incentively over years. And this is one time. I came here for one thing else, but I'm kind of fired up about this. This is one time when we really have an opportunity. Really have a golden opportunity to work with them and others that are actually now starting to look into our property. Down that way off Pine Street, down on there, there's companies that are now trying to look at it. Yes, and it could be a domino effect. So if you put any more additional taxes or increases or anything on that, that's gonna be a deterrent. It's basically housing. I mean, this is one good way we can start bringing our population increasing instead of decreasing.
Well, he's got a great point there. Keep this in mind. If we don't have the housing for these people living in here, they're not gonna live in Trumbull County. They're gonna go to Mahoney, Las, wherever they can find new housing. What? I have, you know, do you guys ever see what Columbia, they put on that tax debate? What's wrong with that? That's a great move. They sold every house in that development and those people are living in there, buying groceries, going to the store, doing everything that we need people to do. We're gonna have, that'd be great. We have all these jobs and they all live out of it. Housing is the most important base of tax for your people.
He said, one other thing for that, uh, those of you who want to research and go back and look at Kimberly Clark and go look in Texas. It's gonna be more than that. So it's all, it's all simply say, you will, you will look at it who doesn't even remote, look like the same place, doesn't even remote. So keep that in mind. But I am here for Trumbull County MA. Um, I gotta see, uh, take it back to John Hickey, unfortunately couldn't be here. But we have to see where you guys are going with the condition of this water. Um, I know there's talking about moving to another building, moving ours to another building. Uh, and I can tell you that we recently had a couple of meetings there. Uh, we're not even in the hot weather. And, uh, you know, it's pretty bad. The smell is bad. We're trying to put bent things in there. We can't operate. With your help, we were able to redo that office completely and make it really not only essential, but I mean, very appealing. Um, I had a conversation with Mr. Hickey this morning. He said that ten meeting and teleported commissioners that his desire is to remain there. Um, one year. Probably last month, we all toured that facilities down there, fire station. Um, he just really wants to know where the movement is because once the summer months come up and are gonna be hitting, I mean, it's, it's not good again. So I don't know what your plans are doing. And I know earlier you you they mentioned about moving the nine one one. I kinda agree with you, Commissioner. You guys got a couple, three big things going on. The movement of nine one one center, what are you gonna do with the morgue? What are you gonna do with the dog town? We just need direction. And I know it's hard to give anything confirmed. But something has got to be done down here because I believe we as a board agree they would have that temporary, you know, but it's, it's a problem.
I thought, I thought we were looking into a tent. You know. What, what you put there? Unit in there for cooling and that, right? So where are we at with that?
Um, we sized everything and right now we're at the point, I got final measurements and it's just a matter of purchasing.
A tent at that location?
Yes.
Inside the garage?
Inside the garage to.
To alleviate some of the smell?
To alleviate that, contain some of that.
Okay. But what is the, what is our future goal?
It's the same thing as what, you know, it's, it's all dollars. It's money. I mean, we need money to move them, right? If we can get, you know, the federal government to say that we can use some of that leftover ARP money, then I think that's a, that's a done deal. We can move for the fire station. But again, we need another four hundred thousand just to move them over there.
Well, I know.
It's, it's, it's money, 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 money.
We got a couple of big three projects there that that really financially.
Not counting the everyday cost.
Yeah.
We, uh, I, I think, I think the temporary solution is is getting the tent cool in the town, getting rid of the, uh, the owner there. Until we can work out what we're gonna do, until we can find the money.
Definitely on our radar, trustee. I mean, it's, it's uh, it's something that we've been discussing ever since uh, Commissioner Bernard and I have gotten here. I know that when Commissioner Malloy was here with, you know, the other commissioners, they were even looking at those things. And then we come into this year with, you know, the budget that we had and, um, so we're digging out of that, but we'll be speaking about, you know, the alternatives and what we can do. I I would agree that to get the you know, it, this is even the point we're gonna talk about, but to get the smell on it.
We have to, eighteen thousand dollars just to do that.
You know, and this is what the tent was with the.
Air condition.
Um.
Then you get the price on it.
But yeah, that's.
Stuff now, but yes.
It's out of order to have to. We're trying to conduct businesses.
Right now, we're doing everything, we're turning over every rock. We're going to Columbus, we're going to DC, we're talking to to state senators, talking to US senators, we're talking to congressmen, and we're, we're searching actively every day
Yeah.
to find money in different, non-traditional ways without raising a tax. And and we're, we're hoping that we find, you know, that we strike it with one of these. We haven't yet, but
We will.
We will. We're not, I'm sure we will from the effort we're putting into it. I mean, we're, we're gonna we're gonna find a solution one way or another.
And really honestly, the financially best way to do it is to make the move to the fire station, but it has to be at least comparable or compatible to make that, that happen. So that I mean, I I don't think he's completely against it. I think what he's really saying is we get some kind of clarification. And I know a timeline or something on there, but if you're gonna at least put that tent up, that will alleviate the smell. It will help. But I mean, that's.
Temporary.
Right, yes.
It's a temporary solution, but we have to do some.
I think financially it does make, we're all toward that. I mean, there's a room for growth there. I mean, I think it would be a lot cheaper than having build something or completely renovate something there. But it is gonna take, it is gonna take two, three hundred thousand dollars just to get daddy coming into a situation where it's, it basically is where we're at now. So I mean, it's just, I'll take it back to the tournament and see it, but I didn't wear a stand, but you made me feel better with the tent because I, I honestly, I don't know. Some of you guys, but that smell, that's not, plus that really leaves it bad in the first. You got people coming in from other areas and they go in there and you're like.
The tent's gonna keep it cool, but it's not necessarily gonna handle the smell.
No.
Now, the tent doesn't affect the ventilation. We're still gonna have to vent that tent somewhere. It's either gonna go outside and our county engineers are gonna be complaining about the smell in our tag unit, or it's gonna be, you know, we're gonna have the proper filtration system eventually that is gonna alleviate, remove the smoke. But that's in the permanent structure.
Okay. Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Appreciate it. Thank you, Joe.
Thanks.
Diane?
I don't have problems for you. I'm Diane, the senior levy administrator. I just wanted to give you an update where we're at with things because there are some issues going on, but do you have an advisory council and myself to review what we can do? So in two thousand twenty four, when we started the homemaker contracts that are two-year contracts, we are overspending with, we we plan to overspend with the thought that the replacement levy would pass. It did pass. So right now in two thousand twenty five, we're not receiving the funds yet. We won't receive the additional until two thousand twenty six. I'm overspending by eight hundred thousand dollars. So it does bring our carryover down to about one point five million dollars after the end of this year. We do have a problem with homemaker care service. We don't have enough money to even service the need that's out there now. There's four hundred people that are on our waiting list. We reviewed this waiting list. Uh, make sure that we don't have, um, um, that we have a proper waiting list. When I multiplied it out by the average number of hours that people receive times the rate of pay for that service, it's three million dollars just with homemaker care. Someone made the comment that our, our population is declining, but the population is senior population. It's a declining population, but it's mostly seniors. Um, I forget what the percentage is for our county of seniors, sixty over, and it's gonna grow till the year two thousand thirty. So I tried to see if we can throw more money on the, on the, on the contracts we currently have. Bill said no. It's not legally allowed to do. Um, I can put out a quote process, but it's only seventy five thousand dollars. What's that gonna give us? You know, how many hours of service are we gonna get? So our thought process is, and this is what I have to send to the advisory council, we're gonna be discussing this. Our next bid cycle, we're going to release a new bid cycle for just homemaker service using these carryover dollars for a couple of years. I don't know that it'll take us to two thousand thirty when we've got our peak population, but it's for a couple of years and then we won't have a carryover fund. We don't have enough money to meet the need, but we need to do this now, take care of the demand that's out there.
You know, we've been seeing phone calls from seniors, and I've directed you to some of those calls and, uh, I know that they don't quite understand what has happened.
Um, so what did happen is not anything that happened. The current vendors that we have have been receiving the same dollar amount of contracted services over the years. Except last year, we added a new vendor, so we doubled the homemaker area of service. But that one contractor that still receives the same dollar amount, their costs are going up. So they have to analyze what they're doing and reduce some people's hours. Some people getting reduced completely. Not only senior levy money, but the state money that came down. State hasn't increased their funding pot for homemaker service, and that's Direction Home that gets another pot of money to service the seniors. Nobody's had those increases other than our doubling last year, but it's not enough. So the agency that didn't get additional funds, they had to reduce their service hours due to the cost of costs going up. And, um, that's who sent out the letter.
Yeah.
For those seniors. So I've been receiving calls as well. I know that our vendor is here that sent out that letter. Um, he can further explain their situation, but, um.
And and I, and we did discuss it the other day. Um, I don't know what the answer is, where to uh, where to pull monies into.
There isn't anything we can do immediately, but we can do this bid process and release maybe another four hundred thousand each year. Right now, we are funded at about five hundred thousand dollars for homemaker care, five hundred fifty thousand with the northern tier. We can add another, almost double that, but it's still not going to meet every.
Senior monies, uh, from the levies, those haven't, are those being generated now?
Or the new replacement? Not till two thousand twenty six.
And and when those come in, where will we be then?
We're already spending that now.
I know we're spending it.
So there's not gonna be any like, that money starts coming in next year, we're gonna have, you know, doubling of service. We doubled last year in anticipation of replacement, like, because the need's there. And I had a carryover fund, so I need to, we needed to spend it down.
What is it?
A new contract process, another bid process. We can do that whole bid process, which usually takes about three, four months from start to finish.
How much are we spending out of the senior levy money on senior centers?
Six hundred twenty five thousand dollars. Mahoney County has one senior center.
I like, I get.
Funded by their local community, not the whole county.
Right. And that's what I was wondering. We're giving scope, like nine centers. I saw in the bid op yesterday.
More than scope. We got Johnson.
I understand that, but I'm saying scope itself, which is its own entity, its own organization that is a nonprofit that gets paid, or I don't even know if they're nonprofit, but they're an organization. We're giving them senior levy money to run nine centers for us instead of those communities doing it themselves without the overhead, without, you know, the, the costs that you're involved with that. Why so many? Why not cut back on some of those?
They've proven themselves. And these communities go to the scope center and say, can you manage our center? Because they don't wanna have to deal with the management of the center.
I understand that, but we got one in Allen, we got one in Warren, we got one in Champion. Why can't those three seniors have to drive to get there anyway? Why can't we all put them in a one? Why do we have to have so many in that close?
You get rid of the Chi- Champion location and you just put it Warren, don't you think the people in Champion would complain?
I'm sure they would, but I'm sure the people are complaining right now. The home health care, they're on a waiting list. They can't get any help. And those are ones that need it, hands-on help, not a place to go exercise.
Sounds like we need a waiting between scope and and the senior.
I think your advisory council is who you need to talk to because you've appointed them to advise.
Cuss until we, we have a meeting and everybody sit down at the table and let's, let's hear it from everybody.
I'm Dave Merkin from Comber Keever. So this, this is my agency really that she's alluding to. What happened was, and and we're the only ones who go out and do this, but we got eighty seven thousand dollar grant in Trumbull County to do home care. We've been getting that for years and years. So it always adds to the two hundred and forty seven thousand that we get from the senior levy. As Diane said, the demand is is insane. We've used that eighty seven thousand dollars now. It's gone. It's meant to last a year. It lasted four and a half months. So what does that? So what does that do to us then? It forces us to go to, we have the group of seniors that are getting the Title III, and we have a group of seniors getting senior levy. Well, now that $87,000 is gone, so we get tw- little over $20,000 a month from senior levy. We had to pick those consumers who had the biggest need, that, that couldn't be home without bathing, without dressing, without toileting, and so on. So we had to eliminate those that were getting home, homemaker things, laundry, things, all still important. But that was the only choice we had to maintain. Senior levy, nothing, nothing changed in your process, because it's still the same $20,000 a month we always got. It's just the 87 is gone now, so it reduces money we can pull from each month. I, I, I've been doing this 25 years, I've been, as I know the commissioners, I'm an advocate for seniors. But the one thing I've gotta say, and there is a waiting list of 400, that's true. Being that this area is such, there's so many seniors in this area, more than any other counties in the state, and so on. We're never gonna cure it all. There's only so many dollars that we can use. I appreciate the commissioners went out, supported us last year, and we got a replacement levy, that's wonderful. But we can't come back and ask for more money. I mean, I, I, I've listened to this meeting and I see what's going on, and there's only so much money that you can go after. What I think really needs to be done, if I, if you're saying to me, hey, Dave, what's the solution? I think the solution, and Bill, you'll correct me if what I'm saying may not be legal, but I think you take that $75,000 that you can give out now, put it back out there, because that will, in at least a few months, start supplementing the $80,000 that, that I don't have anymore. Put that out there, let that go, and then it'll buy you a few months into the fall to maybe put out new biz, new RFP, whatever it is that you need to do. And you're still not gonna get a lot of money, because you can't bid for that much more. I mean, you can only use what's in the senior levy pot. So you do what you can and serve as many people as possible. One of the things that Commissioner Loy alluded to, I've been involved with Mahoney County with their senior levy. I was, I was one of the people who, who the founders have been getting it off. I think you have to look at how these dollars are being allocated. I think you have to go back to what you did in school when you were a kid, prioritize. What's the most important thing in life? Well, home, food, whatever. You have to prioritize these dollars that you have for seniors and where they're going. And, and of course, you know where I'm at, it's, it's transportation and home care. But I believe that you have to say, these seniors all wanna be in the community. They don't wanna go to nursing homes. If you talk to people in nursing homes, they're gonna tell you, they wanna get the hell out of there, they wanna get home, just as all these people who are at home. So the concept is to keep these people at home. The best way we can do that is to provide them the ADLs, the activities of daily living, so that they can remain at home. And I think that you've gotta look at that, you've gotta look at the food, home-delivered meals, very important category. And all these people are my friends and I'm supportive of them. But when you get down to senior centers and, and other things, you might wanna look at that and say, hey, they're very important. Maybe they're not the ideal thing that we need to keep these people in the community. Maybe they should be going, I, I've been in business 20-some years. I just hired a company as a consultant to go out and find grants for me. I'm gonna go look for every grant that's possible to help seniors in Mahoney, Trumbull, Columbiana County. They should all be doing that, everybody should be bringing money to this thing. It's out there. I never understood that there was grants for for-profit agencies. But this company that I have contracted was said absolutely there is. I think we've been complacent, sitting on our hands and just letting this thing run, and taking county money because it was easy. So I just think the whole thing is we've gotta get Diane's committee to look at where the dollars are going, eliminate or reduce some of the categories that may not need it, and get these people, unfortunately, who need home care, what they need so they can stay at home.
Diane, I have a question. Are any of these veterans' families that maybe we could go through the veterans and, and they could help?
They typically ask that question whenever they do an assessment. And I've been asking that question once.
We do a lot of veteran work in Trumbull County. And we will not put someone on the senior levy if they're eligible for veteran funds.
So you asked that first?
It's better for them anyways, because they can get more dollars, more things through the veterans.
I did reach out to Direction Home in February to ask about doing a needs assessment type survey. They already have done some of that, and I want to collaborate with Direction Home over the summer to see what our county needs are to reality possibly, because that hasn't been done. We have changed the allocations over the years, but the last maybe five years, we've kept it the same, you know, basic dollar amounts. Any questions?
Well, I, I guess, all about the money. Well, everything's about the money, but I think, I think we definitely need a meeting with the advisory, and then, you know, maybe with scope and, and just see if we have to really direct some of the attention.
We have a senior center bid process underway right now. Bill, we probably can't meet with a vendor that bid until that has been recommended.
I agree with that. Now, commissioners, for what it's worth, you know, just because you have a bid underway, you always do have the right to reject all bids if you're not satisfied with the way they come in, you know, you do process or figure out another strategy. So that's something to talk to Diane, you know, your senior advisory council on perhaps, if that's something you guys are considering.
When's, when's your next board meeting, Diane?
May 29th. It's the Thursday after Memorial Day. I think that's it. I think that's it. Yeah, and that's when they are going to be receiving the senior center bids that were received yesterday.
Well, those are good for so many days anyway, aren't they? I mean, you can just hold off on them.
We're going to try to award them in July, so we have the whole. Just if we have discussions about senior center bidding, uh, we'll probably have to be behind an executive session situation, wouldn't it, Bill? Because it's
Uh, well
That are underway.
Well, no, there, I don't, I'm not aware of an executive session that would fit for just bidding purposes. And because you've done sealed proposals, we'd have to talk about the confidentiality aspect of that. But, uh, yeah, I don't, I don't think executive session would be a fit.
So now that they're open, is there confidentiality with it, being there's a public opening?
Till they're recommended.
Yeah, just because there's a difference between competitive bids and competitive sealed proposals. So competitive bids generally become public once they're opened, because they're opened and public. Competitive sealed proposal process allows for interviews of different, uh, vendors and things like that prior to the award, so those don't become public at the same time as a competitive bid does. Uh, just a, a little nuance of Ohio's procurement law.
And I just wanna mention for media purposes, so that our residents know, because we are receiving these calls, and you're, you're making calls, I'm, I'm making, I'm directing them to you, of course. But, um, if they get a letter or some of these services are being cut, why, and what's going on, at least short-term, but that you're servicing those that are absolutely most in need, and those that are maybe possibly not as, uh, disabled.
We base their service on the acuity of their situation. And those that were getting more, you know, laundry, cleaning, and so on, had to drop off.
I, I, what I don't understand is, why did we increase services before we had the money in hand?
Because I had a carryover fund.
Okay, and that carryover fund's gone now?
It's, it's down to, it's all on here.
1.6 million.
This is where I was last year, beginning of this year.
You spent a million.
And this is where we will be at the end of this year.
So if you spend another million, we're still
I'm overspending $800,000 each year.
Good, so we'd still have $800,000 left, and we've used the carryover again for another year till levy money kicks in.
Correct.
So let's see, what's the issue then? Why would we cut anything? Isn't that carryover there to be used?
That carryover money grew because of COVID. We had a bid cycle at the beginning of '24, but we increased to spend down that carryover. If the replacement wouldn't have passed, I would've been spending down that carryover for another two years in the attempt to get the replacement. Now that the replacement has passed, we're like in between contracts. I can't add, that's what I ask, if I can add to the contracts, I can't do that. We can do a new bid cycle, and that's what I'm saying that I want to do, is a new bid cycle.
So then you could
With adding
So then I can add, so I can spend that down. But that's not gonna last forever, though. That's gonna, when that carryover's gone, that, that's the problem with this. I can't increase service this year and then next year drop down because my carryover's gone.
Right, but you said next year, there's, there's money will kick in.
We have such a big, no. When we have time, we give that, that
I still see how we had a replacement levy to bring in more money, but now we're cutting services, makes no sense.
We did not cut services.
No, the other one thing is, nothing, well, you actually increased it because there's another vendor besides myself not doing services. But it, it, it makes it look, the real issue is the grant, the, the, the Direction Home grant for $87,000 that I had, that usually lasts a year and it lasts four and a half months. That then had a direct effect on the senior levy, because I had to take the whole Trumbull County as opposed to who's in what program, because it wouldn't be fair
That the grant you lost came from where? It wasn't taxpayer, Trumbull County taxpayer money, right?
Direction Home state funding.
State funding. That's a you and a state problem. If we budget just on what we do, that's our problem.
Exactly, but it became a levy problem only because instead of theoretically having $30,000 a month that I can use in there, now I only have 20. So if I have $20,000 that I can spend, I have to look at those in both programs. That's why you're gonna see levy people getting reduced hours or limited, because they may have been the less acute consumers, and we had to bring over people who theoretically may have been Title III and put them in because they're using much more personal care, activities of daily living care. So yeah, you're gonna get a call, because it does affect the levy people, if that makes sense at all.
Because you're squeezing the other people in on their turf or there where they were getting funds before. You're putting more people in a program that they were already a part of, which, again, doesn't affect our levy dollars, doesn't budget our levy dollars.
It doesn't affect, it, it affects your Trumbull County seniors, not your levy dollars.
Okay. Something, something, we have to discuss another case in further.
Another case in line?
Thank you, Diane.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Merkin. Sheriff, you have something? Mark, Captain? That looks like it. Did you mention, is there anything?
Um, yeah, a couple, just a couple odds and ends things that we need to discuss. Um, what's that?
Talk to me, boy.
No, no. Uh, one more serious note. Okay, we got the fly-in, we're, we're talking about this money stuff that we need. We got the fly-in at the end of next month with the chamber conference, and they've got about 70 people heading to, heading to DC. You meet, meet with senators, meet with, um, various branches of the government, and it's an economic fly-in is what it is, to bring money back to the Valley economically. Um, there was talk, I heard yesterday, about not sending our economic development chairperson Nick to DC to want an economic development trip that should be led by our people. And I talked to Nick today, he said, yeah, he's willing to go. I just wanna reiterate, we gotta send Nick Coggins, he's a crucial part of the team to be there. If that's what we're doing there, spinning wheels, and, and we're turning over rocks trying to find money, the thought of leaving Nick behind doesn't even make sense at all. I mean, that's, he's our economic development director by vote, that we make him, he's the guy. And Sheriff?
I just, I have to find the money.
I know, we'll find the money. I'm wearing a dick around over, over $1,000 to send somebody to bring back millions. That doesn't even make sense to me
But it's more.
In any way, shape, or form.
It's okay, I just, I, I, I just feel like I have to tell you, I have to find the money, and it's just
Just in all fairness.
Well, we just saved $3,000 on the door today. I mean, there's things we, we got, I mean, we're, there's, there's monies we're gonna find. This has gotta be one of our top priorities. We could sit there and wait for the rain money, but we're gonna roll up our sleeves and go get money. And that's what I wanna do, is make sure that out of the three of us, they'll just come in on Tuesdays and Wednesdays. We work every day to try and find money, so that we can fund these programs, to spend the money the, the best way. Sometimes it requires going out of town to lobby, it requires going and turning rocks over in different areas. You know, this DC thing, this isn't just a, hey, let's go have fun and get on a plane and go eat a good dinner in DC. This is to go get face-to-face with not only our congressman, but other congressmen. Last year, we were talking to Jim Jordan, we were talking to everybody saying, we're from Mahoney Valley. You know, don't forget us, from Mahoney Valley. When our thing comes up, don't forget us, putting a face to a name, and then following up with the aides, following up with the people who were there. And it was successful. The trip we had last year, when I was there, I said, why don't all three commissioners go to this damn thing every single year? I can't believe that this goes on and we're not maximizing it with every little bit of power that we can to bring the money back. I find it very successful. Um, it, it, very similar. And we got an invite to the White House next week. I mean, to the White House, J.D. Vance. And, and they have a Ohio Leadership Congregation, 75 people from Ohio chosen to go to the White House, not to go and have fun and get your picture taken. There's a four-hour meeting with the heads of all the cabinet level members. I mean, we're talking the head of Department of Agriculture, US Department of Interior. The, uh, we're talking here about, about COVID money, can we reallocate it? We're gonna be face-to-face with people in that department to say, you need to let us respend our COVID money that's left over. Face-to-face with these people, not calling a congressman's aide, who tells the congressman who may translate the message, and then get to someone else's aide, and then we're sitting there waiting. Eight months later, like, well, what's gonna happen? Well, I don't know. That's how government wheels work. We can cut straight to the source, be at this table, pound our fists on the table and say, we wanna be able to reallocate this money, we wanna spend this money in good, good causes. And, and I think it's crucial, with an event like that too, there's 75 parts of the state are gonna be there. I'm gonna fight for people in Trumbull County, and we need representation to fight for, I don't wanna see the, here the Dayton got this, and Columbus got more of this, and the, the delegation from Akron got this, because they were there. This is stuff we need to be doing, and I know people are gonna bash and say, oh, you're spending taxpayer dollars to do this. It takes money to make money, in any business. You know, there's too many times people mail things in on Zoom calls and Teams meetings and remote work-from-home and stuff. That stuff doesn't work. There's nothing works better than getting up there and rubbing elbows with someone and putting the pressure on them that, don't forget about us, here's what we need. You know, look them in the eye and tell them, help us, give us what we need. Or at least tell us who to go to if you can't do it. So I just, just stressing, you know, that the minimal amount of money we spend on things, the taxpayers need to understand, there's an investment in the future to bring money back. No one's just gonna sit here and say, let's mail check to Trumbull County today, because they didn't bother us. They're, they're quiet, they're nice, they're timid, we don't hear from them. Let's just send them a check, that doesn't happen in real life. So that's my, my venting, my two cents worth. If we need, if, to find any money for something like that should be top priority.
Well, I, I, yeah, and I, I don't disagree with any of you said.
And the DC trip, I'll tell you this much, it's as important to me, I will pay my own damn plane ticket, my hotel to go to DC on Monday, because I think it's that important for people in Trumbull County.
Okay, and I, and I, I understand. The only thing is, is that when our county's payable clerk calls and says, listen, where are we gonna get this money for this? Where are we gonna pull it from? What do we, you know, and, you know.
I can put $1,000 from Chris' call.
The only thing to kinda, you know, I, I did call Nick Coggins, and I spoke with the commissioner, and we both agreed that we thought, you know, it probably wasn't a good idea, correct?
I don't know how you did that, and I'm outside of a public forum.
Well, well
So here we go.
I mean, it was, well, you made the call to Nick and told him to go.
I told him today, and when I heard about it, I asked him, if someone told me that he said he couldn't go, and I asked him, he says, no, I can go.
Well, no, no, I said that I called him Well, no, no, I said that I called him to tell him that, that it was gonna cost close to twenty-one hundred dollars to go. Or more, and that I spoke with Sheriff, and I know we're the commissioners, but when I get a call as the president and I'm asked, you know, where are we gonna get the money, well, then I'm gonna have to make a decision. Now, you and I discussed it, Danny. And I, and I, I agree with what you're saying, and I know we need, listen, rubbing elbows with the right people, I agree. But, you know, it takes money first to get them there to do that, and on an if that we're gonna bring these monies back. Uh, I, you know, and going to DC on your own dime, that's wonderful. Um, I don't even know if I could personally go, you know, I would do the same thing. But, um, these are things that in county and in government are paid for by the county, where the commissioner shouldn't be pulling out of their pockets to go and spend their time away from their families, away from possibly a business, away from, you know, things that they do to work for the county. The county usually pays for those types of things. But we were discussing that if we went, then we would pull out a pocket to go. And that's one thing, but I don't know about the fly-in, I'm still not really sure about the fly-in, I don't know, unless I could be outvoted on it, if that's the case.
I just don't think you understand what it is, you need to sit down and see the players that are going.
No, I understand what it is.
This is, we are leading the kind, we shouldn't be following what the chamber does and what Eastgate does, we should be telling them what we need, and they follow our lead. Our economic development director should be the guy saying Kimberly Clark's coming here. If Nick wasn't a part of this whole process here, there would be no Kimberly Clark.
I know, I get.
If we wanted to send some of these people to South Carolina to tour the Kimberly Clark factory, it would never be here. And there's people criticize that while they took a plane ride to South Carolina. You know, they should be at home doing their jobs, answering the phone when we call, but our septic system's not working.
Yeah, I know.
Well, what's more important right now than people in Trumbull County?
The people don't know what we do.
And, and, and a thing like this isn't there for fun, it's there
It isn't for.
For economic development, it is taking time away from your family and leaving, staying in a hotel and, and being away from you. Nick's got a young baby, I'm sure he'd rather be home with his baby.
He told me.
But that's his job, he's the economic development chair of the county, his job is to go out there and find economic development for the county.
Yeah, I'm not gonna dispute any of it, I'm just saying that, you know, we're, we're, we're here struggling with money with all departments, all these other things, and you know, we, we, we gotta be careful what we do, you know, and it's you know, it's wonderful that somebody's willing, a commissioner's willing to pull out a pocket to go to some of these things and on their own dime, that's commendable. But quite honestly, um, I don't believe that you should. I don't believe that you should have to pull out of your pocket. We should be in the situation, we have the monies, and we appropriated the monies to travel, which we're down on the travel fund.
We are.
I think we only got probably around three thousand dollars in our travel fund.
Yeah.
Thirty-seven hundred dollars?
No, I don't think it's quite thirty-seven, I think it's like twenty-two something.
Twenty-two hundred dollars in our travel fund, you know.
So I gotta, I gotta move on.
How much was in the travel plan to begin with, is my first question?
There was only like six thousand dollars in it.
Yeah.
It, it was.
There wasn't a lot of money.
And I would agree with that, we didn't appropriate enough money.
And the other thing is, I, if I do go, decide to go to Washington, I'll, I'll, I'll pay for it myself, and I did for the, for the commissioners.
The training.
Training, I would say for myself. Uh, I think the question is, and I think what I hear both of you, uh, how important is economic development? I, I, I think if we're gonna grow, gotta have it, um. Do I wanna spend the money there? No, I, I think, I think I need to look at the budget. When these reservations have to be in for that trip.
For the flying, they're, they're booking up right now. Chamber Commerce is booking it right now, we gotta look at it this week too.
I, I, I don't think the budget.
None of the three of us get paid for a cell phone, which we could. None of the three of us have ever asked for a dime for travel as far as gas, or signed out a state car to drive it, we eat that cost. Other commissioners in the past have it, and other commissioners in other counties bill the county for that services. We donate a lot to this county besides what we do. So I don't think we're asking for much, we're, we're saying we need to do business, we need to be able to have the tools to do our job. And, and the nickel and dime, uh, Nick on an economic development thing, uh, uh, why don't we just leave him, tell him to stay home next week?
No, I, I.
And, instead of coming in the office.
Two weeks ago, I, I agreed that, that you should go, remember, and, and I think if he is our economic development person, which he is I, I, I think we need, we have to look for the money, and I think he needs to go.
I can take some workers' comp.
I, I'm not saying he don't need to go, I'm just saying.
I'd rather stay home and have him go.
And then just take a look at how to continue.
Alright, because that's how, how important it is, alright? But, um, and just, and just hope that he can make the right connection with us, um, and and help us out down the road. I mean, you know, when you go after grants, it's not, you don't get it today, you get it tomorrow, the next day. And, and I, I think that's one area where we need to.
Keep in mind, Commissioner, we're hiring a grant writer, the, you know, there's more monies going out that we're gonna have to rely on that, that, that company to do that. You know, I mean, I don't know, I don't know, I, I just.
I think that they're gonna work hand in hand though, I mean, the more knowledge we have, the more dollars we will have.
I don't disagree with that.
And I'll give you this one, we're hiring a grant writer, who are we hiring? And I met her in DC last year and watched her work there, and that's why I said we need to get K O in here to do that, that's why I saw her working in DC. So the trip, just finding her, if she brings back the money, that was part of last year's trip too.
I'm not disputing anything with going and, you know, rubbing elbows with the right people, no, I, I'm not disputing it, it's just you know, we're, we're in a position to where we have to be very careful with the monies that we're working with, that's all.
I think that we can save our way on the ARP funds, just.
I mean, you're not going on the fly-in, I'm not going on the fly-in, maybe, okay, so.
And you got, if we said, if Danny and Nick goes, I, and I have a little bit of workers' comp that I can transfer over. I will only need like probably twelve hundred dollars or something, I have to find twelve hundred dollars, I can take that out of contingency, twelve hundred bucks. That'll zero out our travel fund, I mean.
Well, we don't travel that much anyway.
No, we really don't, and you guys have donated a lot of time, money, you know.
And we're talking twelve hundred dollars out of a sixty million dollar budget to do your job. This is ridiculous, we're even discussing this.
Sheriff, so I think it's a fact too, to just note for the record that you have a lot of department heads and directors who also do the same and practice the same. Uh, when I travel every single day in between going to departments, I could easily put in for mileage, I don't, not a penny. I don't take comp time. When I travel to, uh, where we went, I paid my own way outside of, you know, my own meals were paid for, I did all that on my own. So I really do hope that people are paying attention, that we are trying to cut the spend. Um, again, guys, we have nineteen offices in this county, entities in this county that I travel to on any given day. I go out to the dog, I go out to nine-one-one, I go all over the place, not asking for a penny in return, and I easily could. So you do have departments and directors who are practicing what we preach. So I do wanna make sure that, that the public is hearing that, what we're doing for the most part could be easily expen- reimbursed under our, under our policy, under procedures.
Yeah, most counties that.
And most counties do that, we don't have a credit card, we don't spend. We, I, we have made sure even through passports, you know, people have asked me, I can't tell you how many department heads, I need a county credit card, I need a count, we've said no. H R has said in, in conjunction with, with the board of commissioners.
Commissioners don't have.
Uh, we can't be, we can't be afraid of Facebook trolls, uh, in, in, in our job.
I, I'm not saying, I just wanted to make it clear that Trumbull County by no way, shape, or form, I mean, I, I, I see it all, I mean, again not that you guys don't, but I mean, I am here every day, I pay attention to what everybody's doing, department head wise, director wise, whatever, maybe. I do not see any exorbitant, and actually, the only time we, we actually brought somebody in and had a conversation about paying attention to my list.
Yes.
Um, when I caught something, you know, nothing egregious by any means, please don't, you know, but just be more cautious of, you know.
Try to plan more accordingly.
Try to go to one stop and then go to another, if you're gonna put in for mileage, not be, you know, everywhere all over the county all the time. So, we are watching that. I, I just hope the public is aware of that, by no means is there any exorbitant amount of spending going on behind the scenes, at least from what I've seen.
Well, I, I think the other important thing is, is that department heads and public officials realize, you know, what we're doing.
We're in a crunch, yeah.
And that we are in a money crunch, and everybody needs to watch their spending.
I just want to preach.
And we can't just be out there spending money and saying one thing and then spend it on the other, and, and I don't think we're doing that, I mean.
You're not, yeah.
Debate whether we should spend two thousand dollars to send our economic developer to Washington DC, I mean.
That's how close we are, yeah.
Absolutely, and, 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 you know, we, we all know how important it is, but yet we also realize the money crunch, everything we do here is followed by the dollar sign. Those dollar signs are getting slimmer and slimmer.
And you can see that by conversations here today.
And everybody.
Everything is about the money.
Everybody comes in that door, wants money.
Right.
We don't have it, I, I love to give it to them, we don't have it.
No, but we'll make it work, it's gonna take some time, it's just, you know.
It's gonna take some help from them to help us streamline.
Yeah, well, that brings me to the next topic. And it's.
So Nick's, so Nick's gonna go, we're gonna find him.
I, I, I say Nick needs to go, you second that, then, then let's say Nick needs to go.
Yeah, we'll make it happen.
We'll find it somewhere, yeah.
Okay. Um, now as far as Monday, Tuesday, we decided to go to the White House, I'll pay my dime, you pay your dime, and, and we'll go.
I, I.
Do the best we can.
I'll be glad if I'm on board very short.
And the same stands for me, I, I, I mean, I'll do the same, but I'm not sure that I can make it at this point.
Okay. Um, one, one of the issues has come up, and we've served around it, we need to establish something with the three of us. And that is, uh, there's been quite a few times in the last couple of months where we reached out to employees who were offsite, department heads couldn't find them, they were off, we don't know where they were, what, if they were working today, if they weren't working today. And we found that a lot of our administrators, department heads don't punch time clock. And we've heard from some other employees too. They may show up a little late, leave a little bit early, it's not being reported to, uh, H R or to anybody else, and I, and we had said before, passports have said before the people offsite should punch in and out with their time, so we can at least know, we can always go, if we're, we're trying to look for an employee um, offsite, we should be able to look at mutus and see, are they in today, do they punch in, do they punch out? Do they put in for leave, do they put in for sick leave? I think we're getting a little lax with that in some things, and I would like to establish something again with the commissioners, if people off, we could, we could go at least his office, see if she's here. I mean, that's something, people in the building, we can find them in, in, in the employee environment. But offsite, they said it has been, and Alex could probably back me up on this, it has been a little bit of an issue sometimes when we try to find people, then we found out, well, they were off. Oh, nobody told us, and it wasn't reported that way. Um, so I'd like to establish some type of consensus with us on who needs to report their time, who doesn't need to report their time, and, and keep it fair across the board, so that.
It's reasonable, I mean, it's not unreasonable.
I mean, we don't have control over, but I'm also getting reports that there's people that are, um, being late in other departments. And, and we don't have any control over that, but.
Um, we can't control our departments.
Right. But I think, I think if we, if we do so a policy, we need to urge other public officials to make sure that their employees are being accountable for their time, not coming in late, not paying early. And, um, I don't mean necessarily in this one, I mean, other.
We allow them to cash in.
Because I'm, I'm here, there's people that are not showing up on time. So I, and I don't know how we address that, I mean, we can take care of ours, but that still leaves the other group out there doing what they wanna do.
Right.
It'll be up to the department head to make sure or to audit that, right?
If we, if we come to a, or like, we're here, then I think we need to send a letter on this, and everybody else to follow.
It's not unreasonable, I mean, yeah, I mean, we need to know where, you know, I mean you know, if you can't, if somebody, and they're getting paid for a job, then they should be, you know.
Especially if they're on an hourly basis.
Yeah, exactly.
Well, even if they're not, even if they're salary, we still need to know when they're here, when they're not here, in some way, shape, or form. It gets reported after the fact sometimes, but we, we noticed the other day we were looking for someone the other day, it was automatically erroring the system, they worked eight hours, day wasn't even up yet, because the computer just automatically was saying, oh, they worked eight hours, eight hours, eight hours, eight hours. Didn't say start time, didn't say an end. And the point wasn't there, now they, they did the right thing by turning a slip that they were leaving early, but when we looked in the computer, there's no way to tell. You know, it was, it was an automatic type of thing, we can't have that. And we got many department heads that are out there all over the place, Gary punches in religiously, um, a- and he's one of the guys probably doesn't need to, or wouldn't have needed to, but now he's setting a press at nine-one-one, I know Patty punches in in and out, you know, we, we need to set something established that makes it straight across the board. At least for departments under us.
Uh, Gary, you brought sanitary engineers, yes, Commissioner, everyone in the sanitary engineers management union. We all swipe our cards in and out, and anytime that, uh, you are missing between your scheduled eight hours, there's a slip somewhere saying what did you take? Did you take sick? Did you take vacation? Did you take comp time? Was it a holiday? Was it a personal day? Uh, and, and it's really not that difficult to achieve.
It sounds like.
I, I think.
It sounds like other department and office holders ought to take your lead. Cause that's not being done.
And it is taxpayer money, and it is saving money, it is time, the time that they can cash in, they get paid for it in a year.
And you're smart for doing that, because that alleviates all the problems.
Yes. I agree with you.
There, there, there's no question. Yep.
Well, commissioners, uh.
Yeah, so we'll have to look at them. Maybe work with a prosecutor and H R and work up something, and hopefully the other office holders in the department will, will know with it.
So we're okay with establishing more of a policy on that, and we put something together for next week or the week after, that we can establish as.
Yeah, well, so why, yeah, why wouldn't you be, yeah.
Commissioner, are you asking me to put something together, yes or no?
We're asking involvement, yes.
Yeah.
Well, most putting together, if I'm not, no offense, but.
Well, you are.
Work, work with the prosecutor.
Well, it doesn't, Matt, it doesn't work, it doesn't, it's a separate official, the board of commissioners owns the policies, sorry.
Yeah, it's our policy.
They have their own policy.
I mean, if there's a legal question, I have a hell of a lot of problems with that.
Yeah. I'm just saying, you, I don't mean to throw a spade at you, but you said before, it's, the policy is only for the board of commissioners. I can't enforce a policy in the prosecutor's office, I can't enforce a policy, so order commissioners.
But we, we did establish also though, that we don't expect a director, administrator, someone to call us, say, hey, I'm sick today, I'm calling in sick. But we do expect them to report to somebody, and we kind of said before, maybe H R is the most.
Well, that's why I'm asking.
Most pertinent person for them to report to, if they are calling in sick for the day, or they, they needed some special.
I believe I would be a county administrator, which this county doesn't have, so, and I'm tired of being called when I'm called. So, I'm gonna stay quiet and leave that up to the board, you need to direct me on what you want the policy and procedure to be, and I will gladly oblige. However, I can tell you, if one of you three isn't going to be that person who's going to take those calls, I have been feeling all of that, and it is cumbersome. Um, it is what it is, I'm glad to do that, but again, I need to hear that from you publicly, I'm not gonna just sign myself up for things that don't belong in my house.
So I think that is important, you are the chair to her.
I don't disagree, but I need you to say that.
That's, that's my opinion.
Right. Okay, well, we'll, we'll discuss these things. Um. Anything else? We need a motion.
I just have a real quick question.
Yes, of course.
I have a question about the item that Taze has on for nine-one-one, I really should incorporate a fun number in there somewhere. I think that's a problem, is that. So, should I, should I pull that off, or?
Commissioner's Alex Dean Jones, the Bushing Resources, I also asked your Justin Paul transparency when the meeting was on hold. When we went outside, I noticed, um, the phase one. So obviously, what phase one means, right, I would think, I thought that I asked a question to make sure is that there will be additional phases, obviously, so that's something that we know is gonna happen, obviously, we know we can't just get some drawings, write it, and poof, there's a building. Um, I, the only thing I would say is it may be who of the board to understand what the other phases look like, what, I mean, I right now, we're only given this first phase, and I get it, that gives us a step to next for grants, and I, I understand all of that. But I do think this board's taking a new stance of, we really need to work on everything forward so we can make sure we have at least an informed forethought and that we're planning ahead. It would be who of us to know what phase two, three, four, I mean, what does this look like long-term? Even when you look at projects that, um, Senator Engineers Department has done, you know, we're on phase four of the one of them, I think there's so many, um, is it flaps? I think, I think we are, okay, so we're on phase four of one of them, I, I think that we just need to have a better understanding of what each phase looks like, how we're planning to fund each phase. Kind of similar to the bike trail, we made a commitment back in whatever year.
I've said that.
But we didn't put the money in the funds.
I said that.
We can sit here for phase one all day, every day, but if we don't have if we don't have a plan.
Well, we have a plan, we just don't have the money. That's the problem, that, that's where I'm coming from. I'm, I'm not gonna vote for a hundred thousand for a drawing, to tell me that we need two. Tell me that we need two one, two million dollars. Don't have. Need to work those out before we hire an architect. He gets paid all the money. Sips on your shelf. That's, that's where I was at an hour ago and I'm still there.
Only problem with that is we're, when are you gonna get the two and a half million, you know? I mean, it could be.
It's like the chicken before the egg or the egg before the chicken, guys. That's where we're at right now.
I know, nobody wants to hear, but I had the two and a half million and and.
We've been talking about it for.
Should I hold this item for a week or?
Month.
I mean, I don't know how you can put it through.
With no length?
With no fund.
Well, what are our options? We got the. Medicare lottery, the million.
So you have an MCO um. Done. In terms of non replenishable, so five hundred thousand of those already taken out. Um, for it was the award, I believe was five million. I think we're down to, I don't have my numbers in front of me. I'm sorry I didn't bring that. Um, actually, never mind, I can look it up. Let's be sure. It was in the certificate, amended certificate.
And I said, we could use some of that opioid money for nine one one for the offset. Overdose calls.
In a minute.
You know what I mean? They, that that needs to be retooled or something. I mean, nine one one is very important in those kind of. Situations where you have an overdose related situation, you have an opioid, you have, you know what I mean? And we can't use none of that money.
And it's sitting there.
I mean, and more is coming. Um.
I don't really.
I don't know what the answer is.
Yes, sure. Wilson Trump County Sheriff's Office. Opioid money is very important to our treatment plan that we have April Caraway, our jail minister, David Brady. And I think they're gonna have another meeting with you guys. But uh, that money will be used for the jail when you release it. And then she can take her other funds towards other, you know, health issues and drug issues. That's one of the big things that they have come up.
We're talking about our lawsuit money, not the two fifty you just got.
I'm not talking about that. I'm talking about the.
No, he's talking, yeah, he's talking about the one Ohio, but yes, the the lawsuit. The one Ohio is the correct, it is opioid money is not debating that that is, but there's two. So there's two separate divisions. There's the state and the federal. So you have a combined and I can, we can look at that. I can tell you that. Um, somewhere. Yes, like one was two and one was one. I I'll look here in a minute, but. The bottom line is that money um to what April Caraway said. We do know that over the next eighteen years that there will be, you know, monies deposited into there. However, there's one caveat and it's a large caveat. We don't know the amount. More will we? It is a guessing game. So there's no, you know, one day we're talking, and I'm just throwing this out there, one day we were talking seven million, I mean, that's already down to like potentially one or two. You don't, we don't know. That's all litigation and there's no way to solve for litigation. That's one thing that I've learned and I hope the board hears me when I say that. I wish I had a crystal ball. I wish we all had a crystal ball. I wish I could say beyond a shadow of doubt, I'm gonna win a case, but I don't always know that. Or, you know, whatever the case may be. Um, so. It's the sustainability factor that makes me extremely nervous, but this is the board's money. You do it as you please. But again, when you're looking at MCO dollars, not sustainable. Once that four point five is gone, it's gone. When you're looking at opioid monies, yes, we do know that there's going to be an influx of monies coming, but you do not know how much. So how do you plan for that? I'm not sure. That's why you guys have a question first. Um, outside of that, you know that your sales taxes stem. You know that right now. Until we see the uptick, that would be great, but right now it's not. It's stagnant. Not decreasing, but stagnant. That's important. Your senior levels are on the rise. We already know that. Our population is highly driven and seen. Our high, our population is also. Again, I talked about this when, you know, Bernard Mario was here. We have, you know, a significant underprivileged population in Trump County. We do. Um, all of that takes general fund monies and or state or federal funding monies to provide public services for. So Commissioners. Gotta get a priority together, what you wanna find and how you wanna find it. And there's a lot of people going for funding at the same time.
Well, sir.
But I know one thing, if. If people don't kind of start looking at these conversations as at least we're having the conversations, at least the board's trying to. Have conversations and 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 get informed and change and, you know. Be better for the future. I wish people would look at it like that as everybody's trying to learn and get better versus look at them. They don't know what they're doing. They're just sitting there, you know? No, we're really trying here. Truly.
We're trying not to use your taxes.
That too, but I mean, I I I can't.
That's the.
I don't know how.
These courses, these courses raise everybody's tactics and collect the money and, you know, like, I talked to a lot of people the last four to five days. They've said, Commissioner. No, we can't afford anymore. And I believe them. And 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 that's what I, easiest thing is, that's a fact, that's a fact. No, we just gotta, we gotta tighten our belts first, guys.
So to answer.
I wish I had some hundred dollar bills to lay down here because a hundred dollar bill, I put a quarter next to it, another hundred, I put another quarter. I have five one hundred dollar bills, you'd have five quarters.
No, you're, you're not.
That's what it's gonna cost. For four hundred dollars and a quarter percent, Commissioner, it's gonna cost you a dollar.
Take it to the voter.
One dollar.
Take it to the voter.
Four hundred dollars, one dollar.
See what they say. Take it to the voter and let's see what they say.
So I'm gonna.
I know what the voter would say.
Taking off?
Huh?
We don't have the money.
Well, I guess we're gonna, we're gonna have to take it off.
If I hold it for now?
We're gonna have to.
I don't know, I don't understand these departments. They bring this in.
I got the architects ready to go here. So what, I mean, what are we, we're gonna take the money unless you, we could take it out of the, you could take it out of the uh.
Yeah, but Commissioner, how does that happen? How does an department, they bring us in an architect and say, here, give us some, give us a hundred thousand dollars?
The only question, the only question. Two or two, a couple of meetings ago.
Just people were, we didn't say to bring in an architect and then we're gonna give them a hundred thousand dollars that we don't have. You know, we.
I don't know how we're ever gonna get progress done in this damn county. I'm afraid to put one foot forward in front of the other.
You guys weren't, you guys weren't afraid to spend that that ARP money?
Tony, you keep going back on the ARP money. ARP money's gone. Give it less.
Then you could have corrected all the problem.
We could, all right, and we could have built a new jail too.
Well, you should have.
Mike wants a new jail. We should, we should have done that with the ARP money.
Did it. Then you should have this. You could have corrected nine one one. You could have corrected nine one one.
It wasn't an endless pit. It wasn't an endless pit of money.
You guys play politics with that money.
With what? With what?
You passed it out and and bought everybody whatever they wanted. You know what? I have a list here of every township that received money.
Right.
ARP money. And you guys still gave them money.
Commissioner.
We did. Let's, let's, we spread the money all across the whole county.
Should have been used for Trumbull County first.
Let's, let's. I think the townships have been underrepresented for fifty years. It's about damn time we had some people represent the townships and fighting for them. And letting county government affect them.
And I'm not gonna raise the, I'm not gonna raise the taxpayers' uh taxes because because the ARP money was spent.
I know. All right, we're gonna need a motion to adjourn. Oh, you have something?
He still needs an answer and I just wondered. My holdings item.
Oh.
Till another meeting.
Have it out when we're, we're.
I'm gonna have to do it because I'm gonna end up. I do, but no.
I'm gonna end up amending it or is it out?
What do you think?
Are you gonna take the money from?
No.
First month?
I I still don't want progress up anymore. We've dragged it for three and a half years.
Where you wouldn't take the money?
Many projects.
Why don't we, why don't we, why don't you, not me, I, because I don't want, you know. Well, I think it's hindsight, like it's hind time, excuse me. It's time to relook at the budget now anyways. We're there. I know it feels like we just passed it. We're almost at, remember what I said, June first, by June first. We need to be back here looking at where we're at. I would encourage the board to do that before you make any other long term decisions. That's all. Let's get back. Let's see what we have. Let's see how things are coming in, how they're not coming in, so on and so forth. See what you got in your reserves. See what you got in the MCO. Find a man, it's right, I have it, I can tell you, but, you know, and then again, I mean. Put eight plan together. We're even have to, have to.
Cause we will run out of money for utilities. I, I.
I am gonna be sending a lot of. Asking everyone where they're at.
Well, that's just typically, that's our happier, that that's just, that's normal. This is something, I think, that's different.
Yeah.
We have a lot of departments that haven't made any cuts and they've been underfunded. And that's, that's coming up. And and there's dollars out there that we, that we're gonna need for some emergencies that are coming down the road. I mean. Nobody wants to say it, but we have budget, we have budget problems.
Let's put that on hold. So next week, so we get a discussion. I know Commissioner, and I I feel the same way, but we need to really sit down and find out where the money's coming from. Um, and we'll work with Tasty and, I mean, it's only a week.
Well, one, one good note with this, figures, the latest figures on May tenth. House prices in Trumbull County are up thirteen point six percent in Q one. We have for the first time since two thousand and five. Last year in the last six months, the first time we've seen more people in the workforce in the Mahoning Valley than losing people. We've gone to steady decline since two thousand and five. Last year, we're starting to see more people actually work. These are all things that were put together by um. The Chamber and East Gate and Valley Vision. Everything in the red is where we were losing. Starting in twenty twenty five, you see the green, they're starting to go up again. That's in uh amount of disposable income that people have in Trumbull County. Hourly wages, we've been falling behind for years and years. We used to be above the average in two thousand and eight when Packard was around and GM was booming. The top lines, the national average, we're finally starting to catch up and close the gap here. If you look at it, we've closed the gap by about six percentage points. Just over last year as far as wages we have in Mahoning Valley. And there's more and more stuff here we'll be reviewing, but our poverty rate in Trumbull County. Uh, right now is the lowest that the poverty rate's been since two thousand. So we're going the op- opposite direction too, as far as things are getting better. Things are starting to turn the corner. Foxconn, TJX, these other, and the Trumbull Energy Plant. When we get Kimberly Clark, like I said, I've said before, I'll say it again, poor today than we're gonna be tomorrow. We gotta keep having hope in our county. And not raining on the parade every time we get a chance. We gotta be realistic, but at the same time. We lead from this board here. We lead on, people are feeling positive or people are feeling negative. We need to change the narrative to get people positive. And working with us in the future and making this thing better and not staying in the doom and gloom that Democrats kept us in for years and years and years. And speaking politically, past administrations have done that. We need to move forward.
So.
I agree.
Realistically, Commissioner, I guess what you just said is is that that's wonderful. But that also should show that we're the commissioners that and and every other local official that we need to be able to also sustain public services. If we cannot sustain public services, if you build it, they will come, not if you don't have public services. Not if you don't have nine one one, not if you don't have a corner, not if you don't have the services. We also need to think about that too and how we collectively do it together. We gotta figure it out. I know it's not fun, but we have to do it. We're not gonna continue to go up in wages. We're not gonna continue to get rid of poverty unless we have the public services in that footprint. We won't. I know, for our seniors, for for everybody, everybody veterans, it's all, it all matters. Police, fire, safety, all of it. All day.
Can I, can I give you that something?
Patient.
Um, do you recall Tim being, him for being here last week about the buildings?
For a little bit.
Yeah, the the security though for the building, like JFS, CSEA. So we we culminated everything that needed an update on the security of the buildings. Okay, so there's five. We have JFS, CSEA, um, tag EMA in our back door. So total, uh, we went back to Sage and asked them if they would give us a discount if we did everything at one time. They are willing to do that. I don't have the exact quotes in, but we'll save like five grand. It's expensive, but on the upside, the most expensive security wise is JFS. They're the most expensive. That's like ninety two thousand dollars. But.
They pay for that.
They do not pay for it, but here's the deal. They do pay us rent. Every month I collect between CSEA and JFS. I collect like over sixty thousand dollars per month. Just for rent. So I don't feel like that's a, that's a, I feel like we can get some of this back. I do. So, um. What, I I'll present it like once we have all the actual quotes because they haven't requoted yet with the two point five percent, but that's if we do everything together.
Definitely wanna save.
We could take half of it out of the four oh three account. That's gonna deplete that.
That's still another.
I read.
Is that anything, just the, just the dorm?
It's all their floors. It's every JFS floor. I know you know there's more than.
But what about the bobs? Is that, that's why?
Yes, all of it. It's it's everything in one.
We are meeting uh tomorrow. Sarah, if you would like to join, we're gonna be meeting with the sheriff.
Okay.
Trying to kind of figure out or sheriff's representing desk or whoever, um, I agree that anybody wants to come is welcome, but we do need to figure out that back through the process. Okay, um, because again, we're kind of spinning our wheels planning, but we don't even know what, like, yeah, we gotta figure out.
Yeah, the logistics. We need the logistics. Okay, so if we're done with that, yes, I'd love to. Um, we also have a new bill. This is something I also have to find money for. Typically, we, this, it's, it's something else. We never paid the whole fee. The prosecutor's office was ever so kind to ha- pay half on these prisoner transports. These are very expensive. I have a Mark Twain and a. I don't even know how to say that other name, but it's thirty six hundred dollars. So I have to, we have no more funds in the, in the prisoner transport because typically we didn't do too much of that. So we have another person or people, I don't know really how that works, but I have to come up with thirty six hundred dollars to pay that.
We're.
It's the, it's on the commissioner. The commissioner is solely responsible. And they used to have, the prosecutor's office have a little bit of extra funds and they would help us with that. But, you know, that that's stopped, so I have to come up with that here.
We don't have a fund to take it from?
Oh, we have a fund, but it's it's depleted already. Apparently, you know, there were two other people from October and November last year that I never bought the most. So that's depleted that. That actual appropriation.
We have to pay it. It's a bill.
Yeah, so I have.
As if we don't pay it.
Well, we, we have to pay that.
Turned over to collections.
I mean. Who do we pay it to?
US, US prisoner transport. It's actual company. And they do, like, one, one was really high. I guess the guy had a medical situation that had to be. Taken care of appropriately on the way back, and I think it was a pretty far, that was expensive.
What do we have left in the?
Transporting these prisoners is, we have a lot, quite a bit. We've not spent very much.
I mean, but we keep.
And we're trying, that's what I'm, if we keep pulling from it.
I mean, it's the only place that we got to pull from. From where?
Right, from the contingency.
So that's why I think it's, it's time to relook at all of that.
Yeah.
Before you make any more decisions. Sit down and see where the levels are at, how much you take out of it, what you've really obligated out of it. Cause there's been, no, there's been a lot of talk about what's being obligated, but at this point, I can't even tell what's actually been decided to take out of it or not take out of it or, you know, so.
Do we know where our next budget commission meeting is?
Um, hold on.
It's the twentieth. We just had one. This week, so it'll be not the next, but the following week.
Every other week.
It's every other week.
Now with this week, are all the funds updated with that or is this just the big general?
There was a new amended certificate that went through this week, uh, but I I can't recall the exact amounts on on it.
Can you get that for us so we can look at, do you have a chance to look at all the funds we have and how much is in every fund that's right now?
Yeah, I can absolutely ask, but it should also just as a, as a rule of thumb, it should be, you know, it, it is emailed, it should be, you know, the board commissioners.
Yeah. It's supposed to be emailed after the meeting to the commissioners.
Yeah. It's not a, I wanna make sure it's very clear. It's not a secret thing. I mean, it should be, it is a very good tool. It shows you from funds oh oh one all through nine 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 nine, nine nine nine, excuse me. Um, so those, those tools are definitely very important, but to your point, we have to make sure you're working up the most recent and amended one. Because the last one before that was April second. So a lot can change in a month's time. Um, and also you wanna make sure to look at the trajectory of how we're doing with that sales tax and casino tax. That's where you really wanna hone in on is how that's looking. Um, because that really is the only thing that's, that's funding our county right now to be honest with you. So the FOJ, eight million. It doesn't even touch a proc, it doesn't even touch the sheriff's department loan. I mean, we know what their budget is. So for that FOJ to be split amongst the sheriff's office, the prosecutor's office, and I'm missing one, nine.
Courts, I believe.
Courts, yeah.
Could you remind me?
There's no way.
Why we can't take from our investments loans or anything on our investment? Is it, is it? You had mentioned it before, but I mean.
The, in, when we talk about like long term investments and stuff for the county, the one thing to remember with that is that's not all. How do I? How do I, that's right, it's not all real money, general fund money. You know, there's things in there that are like, the, it's a county fund, but it's maybe children's services levy money that's sitting in reserve. Technically, it's a county fund, but it's not an available county fund. So, you know, yeah, it's when you see the big numbers of investments, it looks like, oh, we've got all this money in the bank sitting there, and that's not really the case. That also includes all of your money, except for what's supposed to be brought in the rest of the year, that also includes all of your money. That we expect to spend for the remainder of the year, so in other words, at the beginning of the year, that budget or that money looks higher in investments, but some of that's gonna be drawn down. Throughout the course of the year for regular budget expenditures, so, you know, there, there really isn't a pool of extra money out there, the only. Extra money, like we've talked, is that carryover balance that you guys really spent a lot of time digging through here about a month or two ago. Um, you know, that's really, that's really the available money, and then the question is, is it truly available or is that needed for the carryout? That's the question that you guys had before.
Another topic, what we're talking, what are we gonna do about uh attorney for the auditor on the, you know. Court case that she uh. Appealed. Who's gonna pay for those attorney fees? Well, are we obligated to do that? The old board passed a resolution saying that they would pay for the attorney fees for that court case. That court case is, in my opinion, is over, now she wants to appeal that opinion. Do, are we obligated to pay for that attorney?
Well, ju- all I would say is generally speaking that, once that's been approved by the Court of Common Pleas, that attorney is with. That elected official for the duration of the case, including appeals and things like that. Uh, now where that's all going, how much it's gonna cost, that's not, uh, it's not really something that I'm. That I should comment on because we have a conflict again, that's the reason we're out of it, but. Um, generally speaking, I will say that that attorney follows that case all the way through the conclusion.
It's not something that we can revote.
Uh, that gets a little bit of a conflict question there, I.
Hopefully, we ask. Tuesday.
Like, that's where it gets a little awkward is that, because that would be you taking action against the auditor, it would probably be. Something that the board would need independent counsel on to advise on.
And speaking of legal counsel. I have a new bill, and Ray, I have, I have to get your documentation, but I just happened to get a new bill for the Levesford Dam from Comstock. Ten thousand one hundred twelve dollars and seventy six cents. So.
Or my. So you're saying that we have to hire legal counsel to see whether we can get out of paying her attorney?
It may be, you know, it's, uh, again, I.
Why don't we just look to the Attorney General for an opinion?
Uh, the Attorney General won't give advice like that, you know, to you guys, that, that wouldn't work that way.
I, I. Would tell you.
I don't know why.
I wish.
I don't. But what I don't understand is without you picking sides, just giving us a, a, a legal opinion. I mean, I, I know you can't pick sides, but, you know, just, we just asked you for a legal opinion, do we have to? Keep paying for her attorney bills, yes or no?
Well, the, the, the problem with that is if I answer it. One way, it hurts another client of mine that I'm advising you contrary to her interests. And if I advise a different way, I'm advising her contrary, you know, to her, to your interest maybe, that's where we get into that issue with a conflict.
Yeah, but we're trying to save money.
I, I understand and I appreciate that, I just, you know, that doesn't cure legal ethical conflicts, that's the problem. I can't go to the Supreme Court and say, yeah, you know, maybe I violate that ethical rule, but it was all for the purpose of saving money. It, it, unfortunately, and maybe in your mind, it, it doesn't work that way.
So typically, I, I guess. Accidents happen, things happen, I, I'm not here to comment on that, but typically. I will say what I said about when I'm asked about Corsa and, you know, why is it so much, and, you know, but we're here now, you know, what, when's it gonna change? I will tell the board this once and for all and every single elected official for that matter, because again, course is not just, the cost is not just because of, you know. One entity, it's, it's everybody, however, with that being said, the only way that bill wouldn't be in an ethical issue is if. We didn't have county entities suing county entities or other townships or whatever the case may be. At the end of the day, that is your root cause. I'm gonna put a state's fate, if we didn't have that going on, then there would be no ethical issue, there would be no need for attorney, for the board to hire additional counsel. The, the goal in Chumbok County, we gotta get to a place where we are not suing each other. Or anybody in Chumbok County. That's all I can say about that, that's the only way to get rid of a legal obligation, funds that we're spending, that's it.
Kinda late for that.
I know, I know, trust me, I know.
And there is more coming.
I get it. Now, there's a difference between acts that, you know, like, things are going to happen, commissioners, you know, accidents are gonna happen. We're going to mess up, we're human. But. We've reached a new threshold of. We've taken it there. Yeah. That's all I'm saying. That changed culture.
So if. Hypothetically, if I said, no, I don't wanna pay for an attorney anymore. And another commissioner agreed with me. So then. Their recourse is, they would sue us, you know, we would go to court to see whether.
Yep.
It's legal or not.
That's a possibility, now keep in mind that these appointments of counsel that are done, they require the application of the board of commissioners and the county prosecutor to be approved by the. Court of Common Pleas, so, you know. There's a real question of how that would work if the commissioners unilaterally said, we're just not gonna pay the bill. Uh, you know, I, I don't know how that would work, and I, I'm not sure I've ever seen that happen before.
Maybe it's time for some new things. Only in Chumbok County.
That's all the bad news I have for you guys for reference.
We can do a journalist meeting, I think.
I mean, again, again, everybody has to realize, everything they do something costs the county money.
Absolutely. Yeah.
Not just a little bit, thousands of dollars. Mr. Chairman, I move major.
I second your motion.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Mr. Roy?
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez?
Yes.